Like to call over the Clive City Council Meeting for January 12th. The Clerk, please call roll. Mayor Edwards?
Here.
Council members Klein?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Judkins? Weaver?
Here.
McLennan?
Here.
Citizen should be here momentarily. She's been caught in some of those accidents. If you could rise and join us in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. I know no changes.
Approval?
Second. A motion, a second to approve the agenda. Further discussion? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The agenda is approved. Next item is citizens' presentation. This is where we invite citizens to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. Do we have anyone here in the chambers wishing to address the council this evening? And when Pete has a chance, he'll check and see if there's anyone available online.
Just staff online at this point, Your Honor?
There's no one on?
Just staff.
Just staff online. Well, we'll move on to presentations. And our first presentation is by Superintendent Dr. Matt Adams. Welcome. We're glad you could be with us tonight.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to come and meet you. Ted personally invited me to the council meeting. I said, absolutely. I know that schools thrive when cities thrive. And I know that cities thrive when the schools are thriving. So I really believe in partnership. I really believe in creating synergy. Matt and I have already had a couple of meetings since I took the reins. I've also had an opportunity with John and Pete. I've met you as well, too. So I think there's some opportunities right here in Clive for us to partner on some things. And we'll be exploring that throughout my tenure, anyway. But I wanted to kind of talk to you about some goals that I have for our school district. So you can kind of understand where we're coming from. And I've remained pretty consistent with these two goals since I started in July 1. And the first is to create a school experience, a fantastic school experience for each and every student that attends West Des Moines. We have about 9,300 students. Do any of you have students, children in our school system? Or have had? Awesome. So I'm talking about your children. You know, I was a product of public education. I believe in public education. And I had a great experience myself. But I'm not naive to think that every student entering our classroom doors are having that same kind of experience. So we're going to work tirelessly to ensure that each and every student has that great experience. Families have a choice now, don't they? Think about what's going on, even maybe even tonight as we're talking. Families have a choice. And I want to be that place that creates that experience for students. Say, I want to be here in West Des Moines. The second goal that I have, I want to be the employer of choice. Teachers, staff, faculty, they all have a choice as well. I want to be the place where they want to work. And I will tell you that that's what I'm learning as I go around and listen to my stakeholders. I've been conducting what I call a listening tour. So I had a meeting with parents in every building this fall. And I've had a meeting with staff and faculty in every building this fall. So I've had 28 different meetings on top of everything else going on, just finding out what the experiences are out there, finding out the things that the West Des Moines schools should start doing, should keep doing, and should stop doing. And I've got hundreds and hundreds of data points from all those data sources. So really starting to put that together into some form of report and ready to share that out. So I spent a lot of time listening, learning, and connecting with families, connecting with students, connecting with civic organizations, connecting with people like you as well, just to find out what's going on in West Des Moines. What's happening right here in Clive? I asked for forgiveness from Matt. We had a major hailstorm right before school started. I remember looking at everybody and saying, we've got to have school. And we did. But we need seven roofs replaced across the district. One is Indian Hills. And that's about finished. It got started. The contractor came in and said, we're starting Monday. Whoa, what? And so I apologize for any kind of confusion that that may have caused. But it sounds like they're kind of wrapping that up. So not how I like to do business. The poor principal said, boy, I didn't think I could say no. They, you know, we got to get these roofs done. And I said, I understand, Shane. But I do apologize on behalf of our end and the short term that it was there. Something I'm really excited about is I started looking at data within the West Des Moines schools. We have a chronic absenteeism problem. We do. So how we define chronic absenteeism is when you miss 10% of a school year. I grew up with 180 days. So it's easy, simple math, 18 days of school. We have nearly 1 in 5 students in West Des Moines schools are chronically absent. So what you're going to hear about in the next month, we're pretty excited about this, is a district-wide campaign. It's be here to be here. Remember growing up, Ted? Ted Weaver? Here. He just did a few minutes ago. Be here so you can be here. And I've kind of expanded it into a couple other areas. Be here, meaning you want a good education. Get to school. Be in your seat. Get in front of fantastic teachers. Because we have talented educators in West Des Moines schools. The second one is be here. You're welcome here. We want you here. You're welcome. Be here. And then the third is be here. Choose here. Choose West Des Moines schools. We know you have a choice. And so we were going to have this big campaign with T-shirts and posters and different things going on, starting in February. And we will get some folks at this table involved. I think some of you have already gotten some emails. I think I'm going to take you up on maybe a snowplow driver helping us out as well. And so really, starting from a district perspective, talk about and educate the importance of being in school each and every day. So that's kind of what's been cooking in my neck of the woods four months or so into it. And I just wanted to stop by and say I'm looking forward to working with you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have or?
Your Honor, the joke with the snowplow is you don't have to worry about snow to get to school. Our snowplow?
Yeah, so the snowplow driver says, I'm here so you can be here.
We're near West Des Moines, though. That's the problem.
Can't get a snow day in Clive.
There you go. There you go.
Questions? Eric?
Dr. Adams, thanks again for being here and visiting with us. We appreciate that update. You talk about school experience. Doesn't make sense as Valley is the largest high school, one of the largest high schools in the state to have two high schools in West Des Moines?
Does it? Well, I mean, that's a great question to ask. You're talking to the former Assistant Superintendent in Ankeny Community School District. And you know, my job was there. It's something that, you know, it kind of comes down to staffing. It comes down to numbers. We got to look at enrollment projections. I will tell you, our enrollment is going down. You know, so when you look at the attendance boundaries, we lost 100 students this year. I'm telling people our greatest strength is one of our greatest weaknesses. Our greatest strength is we got a great school district that people want to come in and stay and raise their kids. Our greatest weakness is people love this, come in and stay and raise their kids. And then the cul-de-sac is full of empty nesters. And when I talk about that, they go, yeah, you're right. And so what I would see, where I came from, was that re-greening, right? Where sooner or later, it will cycle. So I think enrollment is going to really drive those kinds of decisions. And then also funding and state funding and be able to do that. 80% of our general fund goes to, you know, teachers. And so it's going to be very critical. I think that's a great, it's a great question. Thank you.
Was it driven by the Valley Dallin game, though?
Not at all. My concerns for kids education.
Yeah, great, great question. Enrollment and funding is going to drive, would drive that.
Thanks again for coming, Dr. Adams.
Absolutely.
Really appreciate it. I attended one of the listening tours, as you know. My wife's attended a couple of them. I guess a couple of questions. One is, what's your main takeaways that you've taken from those, whether it's employee side or parent side? And, you know, right now, I've spoken to a lot of different folks. There's a lot of hope and optimism with your tenure and you coming on. That momentum can easily ebb if progress isn't seen.
Correct, yeah.
And so you have to create some momentum. So how do you do that?
Well, you look for some quick, easy wins within the data set. I will share this with you as we've been crunching the numbers. There's themes that are emerging that are very consistent between what the parents, families are telling us and what staff is telling us. One would be resources. Just having the necessary resources to accomplish what it is that we want to in those buildings. And so we will be presenting a staffing plan to the Board of Education later this month that adds some resources, particularly at the elementary level. Because what we're finding out is just a responsiveness to some things. You know, and you and I have had these conversations about behaviors and things going on in the classroom, ensuring that our resources match what's going on in the classroom. Two, I'm noticing a gap. I've called the teachers the first responders. So when things happen in that classroom, they are definitely the first responder. What kind of, what kind of learnings, trainings would they need? They're begging for it, to be really frank with you. So we need to identify those. I've told my Director of Special Programs, we got to do something radical. We got to do something for that. Three is that continuum of services. Meaning, you know, is if, when you think about support services that you get students, making sure that those are matching. I'm hearing a lot of that. And four would be accountability. Just accountability within the buildings. Those would be four main themes that I'm hearing from staff and from parents.
Kind of accountability, like student accountability for discipline issues, things like that?
You got it. You name it. I mean, they, I lumped it all in one word, accountability. But absolutely, from student accountability to staff accountability to just how we go about doing our business.
Thank you.
Great question.
Other question, Srikanth?
So I'm going to put you on the hot spot a little bit. So, you know, we just read about, I think most of us have read at least, about the DMPS cyber attack that they're just, they're working through right now. And, you know, we've seen in the past, you know, DMAC has gotten hit and then other communities.
Cedar Rapids Community Schools.
Yeah. So do you guys, you guys have plans?
Absolutely.
Harden that?
Ironically, this is something that keeps me up at night. Because when you go to superintendent meetings, you hear about these things. Every time I go back and go, hey, come on, Brian, tell me, you know. And so we do have a number of things in place. We met just as of yesterday. Because with Des Moines, we talked about some of the small barriers that we would still experience and problem solve those and came up with some good solutions. So, yeah, it's real. You know, it happened in Cedar Rapids, it happened in Des Moines Public. And when you talk to your insurance company, so EMC, so one of the number one things right now is cyber attacks that are causing, our insurance, yeah, everybody's smiling. You know what I'm talking about. Cyber attacks are what are causing insurance rates to go up.
Thanks.
Yep.
Michael?
Just a couple of comments. I appreciate how you opened it up and talked about your partnerships that you're going to have with cities, right? And the importance of the city and the school relationships. It's something that I think we, and if you've listened to any past conversations we've had here, I've been pretty hard on, right? And I don't think that relationship is there. I don't believe it has really ever existed since I've known. You have giant facilities and parks, basically, I call them, throughout summers and other times that you're not there. Partnering with cities makes sense. I mean, it's the same tax dollar. It's something I could just get on a soapbox about because it drives me crazy, right? It's each one of ours taxed, I was going to the schools, going to the city. But yet, we put barriers up on your gym or, you know, on the, I heard something about trying to restrict the playground at Indian Hills, you know, at nights and weekends and how they can interact with, like, football and stuff. That, to me, is insanity, right? You've got a great school in Crestview. That's where my kids went. My wife worked. And it's a desert over there of activities. It used, you know, now Clive has moved in and are doing some stuff in a community center over there. But the partnership, and I know you're new, so I'm going to watch this. I think it's very important in the next six months of what happens before summer and summer programs. That partnership is just made to work. And I just don't think anyone has ever, either side maybe, but reached their hands across and made it work.
I think that, Michael, I think that's the key, is reach your hands across. Matt and I have already talked about a couple of different projects that I'm very open to. He's very open to. I think, I think you need to start the dialogue, have those conversations. You know, we built an elementary school in Ankeny. The city stuck a pool right next to it because we knew we needed the parking lot during the school year. They needed the parking lot during the summer. The Miracle League that's in Ankeny is tucked in right behind Terrace. Well, it's Terrace Early Learning Center now, but Terrace Elementary. Same, same thing. We saw those as a win-win. I think it is insanity when you don't find areas to partner and work together. Matter of fact, I was sharing with Matt this weekend. On Saturday, I stopped in at Indian Hills because they were using the facility for a soccer tournament. And I just wanted to stop in and let the folks know in that it was putting on a soccer tournament that we're very supportive in use of our facility. That's what they're for. We've got beautiful gyms. We've got beautiful facilities and we do use them a lot. So when we identify, when we work together and we identify barriers or things that are preventing us from, you know, creating that synergy that I really believe in, we're going to have a conversation about it.
Thank you. And I've shared with Dr. Adams some of the council's priorities, particularly in that 86th Street neighborhood, and talking about this RFP we're about to send out for Lanan Park and what we're looking at for the long term for the Harbach Center and some potential synergies there. And to his credit, he's been very open to that. And we're looking at maybe later this winter of getting staffs together and maybe even at some point, the school board and the council together to really start to talk about real things that we can do to partner together. Because I think we're in agreement that there is facilities in that neighborhood. Does the city necessarily need to duplicate something that's already there? We've had an open dialogue about that already.
Already, yeah.
Short timeframe, so.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think it's the dialogue being open. And I think it's, and I think shattering paradigms we all have, right? You know, school, school, city, city. Sometimes it just, it sounds, it sounds a little out of the box, sharing a parking lot with a swimming pool, doesn't it? But it works. And I just think that there's those kinds of opportunities. You got to kind of break down those mental models you might have and think a little bit more creatively to come up with those solutions.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks so much for being here.
Absolutely. I appreciate the time. Thanks for the invitation.
Thanks for coming. Next, we have our consent items. Requires a resolution. Approval?
Second.
A motion, a second to approve the consent item. Further discussion, if not, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? And consent items are approved by a vote of five to zero. Next, we'll move on to action items. And we have a site plan amendment. Jill?
Thanks, Your Honor. It's up. It's on here. So what you're looking at tonight is a site plan amendment for Amari Vita. It's a townhomes over at Shadow Creek. You approved it not too long ago. So now they are looking at the construction phase of the project. They're already doing some work over there. And with the construction drawings, some of the elevations were a little different. And staff thought some of those components were different enough to at least have the conversation of whether we're talking about apples to apples or apples to oranges of how significant these changes are. What you're looking at, I can kind of run through them here. But pretty much the, on your right side of the screen is the originally approved site plan elevation and then what's now proposed. So some of those elevations are a little bit different in materials, maybe the number of dormers, windows. They also have a number of options that the applicant is going to give to potential buyers to make some changes and give some uniqueness to the layout of those townhomes as well and the look of those elevations. So they're not all going to look 100% like the proposed as well. The important thing to keep in mind is if they were to have given us the, these now current proposed elevations, they would have been approved or by staff. There's nothing in them that staff feels is inappropriate for the design or layout of the complex. They just are a little bit different than what was originally submitted. We went over these with planning and zoning and they unanimously recommended approval. So if you have any questions, I can answer those. Or the applicant is also here if you want to discuss these.
Questions for Jill? If not, we're looking for a motion to approve.
No approval.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero. Good luck. Next, we have a public hearing setting. Jeff?
Mayor, Council, good evening. A little strange for a public hearing setting, but there's a lot to discuss. And I thought we should talk about it. Waukees has let their proposed outfall sewer main. I need to award it within 30 days. So we need to approve the easements for them sometime on the, either February 2nd, which is being proposed, or the February 9th meeting. So they came to us, so it's been a while now. And we need to install or construct a outfall sewer to connect to the WRA. That outfall sewer will be installed in the Green Belt along Little Walnut Creek. Will extend from our west corporate limit at Warrior Lane clear down to our east corporate limit, east of Alice's Road. We've been working with them to look at what those, what would be required for them to get those easements. We've looked at what the cost to us would be, what damages we might incur. And we put together a number for them and what we saw was fair value of those easements. With the proposed sewer, the WRA or Waukees will be using SRF funds, the State Revolving Fund, which creates some sponsored project funds that would be available, about $929,000. Waukees offered to give those to us as part of the payment. And then in addition, they will pay us any difference between the actual funds received and the $1,135,000 that we agreed to as part of that. Basically, moving along, that dollar amount includes, I think one thing to make clear is the replacement of the trail to the east of Alice's Road. Their project would get parts of it. They would have patched it back together. We asked them not to replace that trail as part of their project. We will take it on and put it back in entirety so that we don't have a patched up trail and we have an all-new trail and it's done to our standards. So that is included in that $1.1 million there. With that, we will be bringing another reason to you or another agreement, 2080 agreement to you. It's a five-party agreement between Clive, Waukees, Urbandale, Urbandale Sanitary Sewer District and the WRA. And that will basically transfer the new Waukees Outfall Sewer and Clive Urbandale Trunk Sewer that extends from Alice's Road down into Urbandale. And that will also be transferred to them. It's currently ours. The WRA will take over the maintenance on that. So with that, I wanted to present to you what was here. One of the things on the easement that we are kind of giving up, it's going to be where our trail is. Eventually, the trail will come back, parallels our sewer. So there's going to be a fairly wide swath in there where we'll do some ecological restoration. But it won't more than likely be able to include trees within that easement. That's one of the things we'll give up. We can ask permission and the WRA could give us permission, but probably not on top of the sewer main. And it's, the easement's 30 foot wide. So there'll be a swath through there that probably won't have trees, but there'll be a trail. We can do other kinds of ecological restoration through there. We've talked to Stan Tech. Stan Tech is very comfortable with making it work without that. So with that, a lot of information, a fairly thick packet. Won't go into a lot of detail unless you have questions.
Questions for Jeff? Not, we just need a resolution set up here. No move?
Second.
Motion, a second to set the public hearing for February 2nd at 6:00 PM. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? Clerk, please post that vote.
Again, for the council's benefit, we know it's a little bit out of the ordinary for us to do this. But because when we get to the February 2nd date, that's going to be kind of a, we're getting to a hard deadline of having to consider this and approve it. We wanted to get it in front of you as soon as we can. And Noah, with an I Master team, worked with Jeff to really go through this and find detail with Waukees Legal Counsel. And this has been a long time coming. This has been a pretty big project for the last five to six months. And we're pretty happy with where we're at. And then as we lean into the next item on the agenda, they, these two kind of go together. And then Pete will talk a little bit about the community engagement with the neighborhood. That'll come, start coming here very soon.
Thanks, Matt. The resolution passes by a vote of five to zero. Except, Ray?
Council, Your Honor, may I? Is it nervous in here? Is it just me?
It's warm.
Okay. Excellent. Our Water Resources Team is recommending that we accept the professional services agreement with Stan Tech Consulting for the amount of $671,000 and some change. This is for Phase 2 of the Little Walnut Creek work. It's following Waukees Sewer. So we have already completed Phase 1. Phase 1 got us through conceptual design. Phase 2 will get us all the way through construction documents. Those construction documents, as a quick bullet point, that it imaginary in the air, separating east and west of Alice's Road. The stream, the other stream, the trail, the other trail, and then the ecological restoration to cover everything that is untouched after the sewer blows through, the stream is done, the trail is done blowing through. So should be a fair, four sets of construction documents and a perpetual maintenance plan for the ecological restoration is included in that PSA. Additionally, there is some sort of creative financing with a mitigation banking option. Stan Tech had previously looked at our options for wetland and stream mitigation and found that we can recuperate 1.7 ballpark. It depends on what we actually end up installing, 1.7 million for, after having put in about $340,000 for professional services to do the monitoring, submit everything to all of the agents, the permitting agencies and that kind of thing. So I wanted the council to know that our guiding philosophy in which, I think y'all have seen a couple of designs, design concepts come up before you. What Stan Tech has is a combination of both of them. There was the, we can either give it gutter guards, let the stream thrash around in between, or we can touch every linear foot. And we've worked with Stan Tech to identify some critical, some key, key areas where we will be doing some spot treatment in ways that make sense, both for construction and the financing that's available and doing as best as we can by the stream and also as best as we can for creating an amenity that our residents can enjoy in a reasonable timeframe. That said, the construction is sort of daisy chained together for the next four years. There's a lot going through that area. And so our plans to engage the community are already in the works. What else do I have? I think that's, we intend to commence with neighborhood engagement in the beginning or middle of February.
Eric?
Ray, any concerns about the project? And what's the length, the scope of the project as far as the timeline?
So professional services is going to be for the next, this scope is supposed to get us through 2023. There's the possibility that there will be additional professional services in 2024. And that is because the construction daisy chains and lags itself. So any unexpected things that come up because of the sewer or the stream, if they were to impact the trail, there might be some adjustments there. But the bulk of the, the lion's share of the design work is supposed to happen in 2023.
Concerns for your end from the?
No. This, this is a, this is a good relationship. I trust Stan Tech's work and everyone's been really communicative and making sure that we're getting all of our different departmental needs met that really represent what is going to be the best for the city in the long run. So no major concerns.
Other questions? If not, we're looking for a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second. Good motion, a second to approve the resolution. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post the vote?
Following the vote, if we, Your Honor, I'd like to have Pete kind of touch on the community engagement that's going to be happening here starting in February.
Very good. That passes by a vote of five to zero. Pete, tell us about community engagement.
Thank you, Your Honor. As Ray mentioned, this is a project that's going to take multiple years, not only for the restoration work, but for a number of things to come thereafter as we continue to build out the neighborhood in the far northwest corner. The fact that we're dealing with two of our neighboring communities adds a level of complexity. But I'm happy to report that our partners in Waukees and in Urbendale have both been very responsive to the early planning we've put around neighborhood engagement. Our first step will be setting up a neighborhood meeting that will happen in early February. At this point, we're targeting February 15th. That's a date that we shared earlier in communications and I'm going to double check that to make sure I've got my correct Wednesday I do. As that finalizes, we'll send out all the communications to all of the councils. So anybody who'd like to participate is able to in that meeting. The area of people in Clive that we're talking about inviting, thank Warrior Lane to our easternmost limit approaching 156th and Meredith to Douglas. So roughly two square miles in Clive. We hope to host that meeting at Schuler Elementary. For those who are able to attend in person, I'd like there to be a virtual option as well. That will depend a little bit on the room that we're able to secure as we bring everybody together. Letters inviting or postcards inviting folks would go out late January, at least two weeks in advance of the final date that we set for the neighborhood meeting. I don't want to speak to all of the additional work that Waukees and Urbendale may be undertaking with this. They have much smaller populations that are directly affected either on the south side bordering Little Walnut Creek or on the north side bordering Little Walnut Creek as it runs from west to east. And Clive, though, we know we've got quite a few. As I've counted up the neighbors who live very close to the trail on either, or the creek on either side. I think we're talking about 20 different property owners. One of them is a large HOA that has a private pond that's just to the north of the existing trail and the creek. Before we get to our neighborhood meeting, we'll be communicating directly with those folks. I'll be the person taking the lead, phone calls and any other follow-up that's necessary so that those people aren't surprised about what they'll hear at that larger meeting and have a chance to start narrowing in on some of their specific questions. Those trees that are right there along their property, still along Clive property. And I want to emphasize that currently our plan and our guiding philosophy is that there will not be a need for taking any private property or getting easements on private properties to do this work. There was another path we could have taken with that, but we decided because it's already complex enough that we have strong, strong preference to keep all of this on Clive's property or Urbendale or Waukees property to get the work done. Following the neighborhood meeting, we will be establishing our project sort of email distribution list. The actual sewer project will be, the project page will live with Waukees because they'll be working with their contractor and getting those regular updates. However, as we've done with other projects that involve multiple jurisdictions, Clive will get that information. Make sure it's represented accurately and timely on our website with direction then to another project page, to the primary project page where folks can get more information. I've got great relationships with my communications colleagues in both Waukees and Urbendale and the three of teams together, I'm sure are going to do a great job keeping people informed. There will be some heartache. There are going to be a lot of trees going down. So the big headline, if you were, I'm sure going to ask a participant in our neighborhood meeting and later in February will be that this spring, there will be a more or less 100 foot wide swath of trees that will be coming down that runs where more or less with the new sewer alignment that's going in overlaps and runs very closely to where Clive's existing sewer and trail are right now. It's going to be dramatic. I drove it this morning, just so I had a sense for what it looks like today. And you're able to see across the creek into the neighborhood. So the Verona Hills neighborhood on the south side and some of the Walnut Hills condo association or homeowner association on the north side for a big swath of that. And when those trees go down, it's going to be a lot easier this time of year, especially to see through that. There's a lot of elevation change. So a number of those homes already set up high enough that they kind of see over the top of the canopy into the next neighborhood to the south or looking south to the north. But there's still going to be some, some heartache. So making sure that folks know that this isn't just pain, but this is a new amenity with trail being improved, better trail surface, and then extended further west along with future parks that are being introduced west of Alice's Road. That's a big part of this story. The biggest thing after that then, of course, is Alice's Road. And when all the improvements that are coming to Alice's Road, it's at least a decade worth of improvements that are going in here for all of these residents, which we hope they'll come to see as a decade worth of investment in their properties and their neighborhoods, making them better, making them even better places to raise families.
Questions for Pete? Eric.
Since we're having this kind, and we've done this before, unfortunately, we hate to do this, but what's, what's our plan on removal of those trees? It's, I know it's a substantial portion right there. Is the city doing that? Are we contracting it out? And if so, are we going to mulch that? What's the overall thoughts on that?
That's the sewer contractor's responsibility. Two things. What do we do with the material? When it initially goes down, my understanding is it goes down and stays where it's at. The cost of hauling it out would be substantial. I do believe though, there's an opportunity for us to reuse some of the material potentially with some of the stabilizations.
I doubt that that's going to be, I don't know how we.
Right.
Too much time.
Right now, all of the trees that come out due to the sewer will be the contractor's responsibility, responsibility to completely remove. If there are additional trees that are taken down as part of the ecological restoration, since Stan Tech is doing the bulk of that work, they'll be able to identify trees early to take them down, to use them for the stream restoration. So we'll be able to reuse our own trees for our own projects and Waukees will be responsible for removing their felled trees.
So to clarify, then any felled trees that their sewer contractors taking down, they have to remove them from the space as well?
That's my understanding.
Okay. So I was mistaken, Councilman. Those will actually be hauled out.
Because that's a lot of, the grief that we heard along Indian Hills too was, you know.
Yeah.
Trees.
There are some big ones out there.
Anything else for Pete? All right. Thanks, Pete.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Appreciate the update. Next, we've got Hickman Interchange. Jeff.
Another big project we've been working on for a while here. As you know, the DOT is proposing some improvements to the I-3580 and Hickman Interchange. We worked with Urbendale and got involved with them to look at some enhancements to that project. We have a project there that's valued at about $80 million on the DOT side. We worked with Urbendale to look at those improvements for some bike pedestrian connections, stormwater aesthetics, helping us with grants and right away. As you know, last August, Snyder and Associates presented some of those recommendations to the council. We discussed them there. And have worked with Urbendale to move forward with this and put together a contract to actually do design, incorporate that into the actual overall project. So what you have for you, before you tonight is a fairly large number for some design services. We've already, the original contract for the investigation and pre-design look was about 114,000. Our share of this additional work to do the actual design, which will include the bike pedestrian bridge that goes over the ramps and under the interstate, provides a connection along with the connection down to the trail from Hickman. Some stormwater improvements, some aesthetics on the bridges. That's about 350,000 for us, a little bit over that. These costs and all the new enhancements are going to be split between us and Urbendale 50/50. We've agreed to help with the bike pad that goes on the north side along with them helping us with the bike pad down to the trail. The stormwater, the aesthetics is all 50/50 at this point moving forward. So the other thing that need to update you on is as part of the project, we'd applied for some grants. STBG money, we'd received about 2.5 million. Talking to the DOT, they've agreed to allow us to count that towards our share going towards this, our improvements. Our improvements are estimated around the eight million, nine million dollar mark right now. So we've got a nice chunk to knock that down a little bit to start off with. With that, answer any questions or?
That's eight to nine million. Both communities would be paring in that cost. So that will be, and those grants that we applied for was Clive and Urbendale together. So it would count towards those shared costs.
So is that, that eight to nine million estimate, is that for construction only or is that for the whole?
That's for just the construction portion of the enhancement.
Of the enhancement.
The cities have requested. This is a $70 million.
No, no, I get that. Yeah.
But they would, so the DOT would include our enhancements in the design, in their bidding. They'd build it, construction administration, and basically send us a bill at the end for the portions of the project that we asked for as enhancements to the interchange that we've laid out to you. So that eight to nine million again is a rough cost estimate for something that's not going to be billed for five years. So we're also anticipating that number probably changing a little bit. But what's really nice about the MPO money being counted on our side of the ledger is it was actually a joint. It was us, Urbendale and DOT that applied for that money. So that two, so we got two and a half million off the top already. And then as we, what's laid out in this scope of services is Snyder working with both Clive and Urbendale to go after more grant funds. To again, bring our city number down, hopefully all the way down if we're fortunate of what we need to share, Urbendale and us need to share of those enhancement dollars.
By approving this, we're in essence kind of obligating ourselves to the, to these enhancements, right? We're kind of, we're committing ourselves to that at this point.
Yeah. I mean, there, there would be points if you, if we really wanted to back off of it. We have a point in the future, but we're committing to these design dollars.
This would be some cost then at that point.
The design cost, yes. Right. That would be correct. So this is us saying we're ready to move forward with these enhancements and have the DOT incorporate it into their overall big project to bid.
So Matt, we're into this hopefully between three and four million then after all sudden done.
Worst case scenario.
Depending if we don't get any more dollars from a grant.
And our hope is, is to bring that down as far as we can. We did put some money in the CIP of our own local support funding for the design portion. So we already have some funding dedicated to that. Now, what happens typically with these DOT projects is they build every, they build everything and then they send you a bill at the end. And so for a project like this, it might be 2029 or 2030 before that check comes due or that bill comes due. But we want to plan ahead for that and hopefully that, that bill is small in terms of local dollars for these enhancements to really take the Hickman Interchange to another level. And I know that's been a goal of this council and a goal of the Urbendales Council as well of making this stand out versus some of the other interchange improvements we've seen across the Beltway.
That allow you to do something like a sinking fund or something up until that time to pay for it? Or you just plan to pay for it in 2029? And how do you plan the budget, budgetarily?
What we would do is depending on how successful we are with the grants, we're going to know over the next couple of years because we're going to need those grants. Those grants are going to need to be timed to support. And then there'll be some kind of agreements with the DOT where we turn those grant dollars over to them. Any local funds that we want to set aside, we would just set aside in a capital fund and we would earn interest on it. We have to be careful how much interest we earn on it, of course, because this is a tax, federally tax deductible, GO bonds, if whatever, whatever local funding we put towards it. But we had set that money aside. So it's there when we need, the need to pay the bill. But we don't know what that is yet, but we'll have a good idea over the next two years of what that is going to look like.
Other questions? Srikanth?
I do have a question about one of the line items, just to get some clarification really. So the aesthetic enhancements that are, you know, kind of in the line item in the budget there for, for this proposal work, it's pretty high. Like it's, it's one of the biggest line items there. Is there something more than just, like when I think of aesthetic enhancements, I'm thinking like the signage and?
This was more on the bridges, doing concrete molds and forms. So the bridge didn't look like it was done by an engineer, maybe more like an architect.
Okay.
But give it a little bit more than just the basic box look. So a lot of that was put in for that. And I think the cost, most of those costs are going to come in that form of what we're doing for lighting, for the work on the bridges and so forth.
All right. Thanks.
It won't look like a DOT bridge then.
Yeah.
Other questions? And clarify, the 690 includes the Urbendale contribution. Hers is?
What's that?
690.
Yeah. Yeah. That's the total cost and we would split that within.
Hers is just 351.
Part of the new agreement includes about $21,000 from the previous contract that ran over that wasn't split 50/50. So we get a bigger portion of that, but everything on the new contract is 50/50.
Another element too, that I wanted to make the council aware that we're going to be studying is as a part of the original interchange project, the DOT was planning to put some temporary signals up at 108th and Hickman as a part of the construction phase. One of the things that we've talked about, we've talked around this table about is that frontage road that connects to 111th and whether or not we could be at a point to eliminate that connection, working with the businesses, understanding what that would cause, but more than likely what that would necessitate as a permanent signal at 108th and Hickman to provide that full access out for everything that would be east of that frontage road where we would cut off that access to 111th. And everybody knows it's pretty close to Hickman. So it's kind of a, not a great setup there. So one thing that we're pursuing, we're, we already started talking to the DOT about in Urbendale is not having that temporary signal money be wasted that the DOT would put at it, you know, offering to the DOT. If you would take that same money and maybe some grant used, inner, inner traffic signal grant money that they always have as well that we've used, we're using on other Hickman intersections to the west is if they would put that money towards a permanent signal at 108th. And then maybe we can do an analysis, working with Snyder on the warrant study for that intersection and then potentially reviewing, eliminating that frontage road connection and understanding the impacts of that. So one thing that's that we're working on right now with Snyder is doing that kind of little study of understanding what the warrants would be both currently and after an interchange, a new interchange and a cutoff of that frontage road. What would that look like at 108th? Because it may make good sense for us to invest that money in a permanent signal there instead of, you know, basically throwing away temporary money. And then we can maybe solve one of our other challenges that we've had on our side of the street with that frontage road. So that is something that, I know we've talked a little bit about that treaty planning of what we wanted to do with that frontage road. Now's the time to look at that because that whole 111th and Hickman intersection is going to get completely blown up when the Hickman portion of this project is done, because there's going to be an additional turn lane and other things that are going to be added at Hickman. So now's the time to look at that. So that's something that Jeff is working on with his counterpart over in Urbendale and having Snyder do a little deeper dive on the warrants related to 108th.
I'm interested to see what the reaction from local business that use that road too, Matt. That's, that's a big change for those folks over there.
Our hope would be this would be a, putting a signal on 108th would be a safer, a more efficient way of giving them access out to Hickman versus, because at that frontage road, you've got the median there. So you can't go south on 111th. So there is only very limited access that frontage road provides. So some things that we want to talk about, we want to be thoughtful about it. We've got a little bit of time here, but there's going to be a point at which with the DOT will decide whether or not this is a separate project that we just go do ahead of the interchange, because the work on Hickman itself will be the last phase of the interchange project. So you're talking 2027, 2026, because the interstate bridges will be first. So we have a little bit of time, but it's something we want to really work on in the next year.
One of the nice things, if it is something we want to do, we have an opportunity here to get the signals at a very reasonable cost. As Matt alluded to, the U-step funds for an intersection. And if you're now cutting off 111th, they may make it linear so they can double the U-step funds. In addition, and talking with Tony Guff, some of the DOT indicated that, you know, they may be able to throw a little bit more in if they don't have to pay for temporary signals. So we can get down our costs for the signals if we are interested in reading quite a bit at this time. So.
Sounds good. Further questions? If not, we're looking for a resolution.
Resolution, approving the Denim and Agreement number 2022-P-019 for Design Services for the I-3580 and Hickman Interchange. Enhancement design, I would need DOT for $690,237.29.
The motion and a second. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Next, we just need a motion to approve a pay request for RDG. We have a second.
Second.
Motion is second and there'll be one abstention. All those, further discussion, seeing none with the council, please vote. And will clerk please post the vote? That passes for favor with one abstention. Actually, we'll move into the University Avenue Corridor story, story. It is a story.
Study, story. They both work. All right. So we're here to look at the University Avenue Corridor study. I just have up here a map of the study area. So as you know, most of it is West Des Moines with a few pockets in Clive, including 114th Street, the area around West Ridge Shopping Center and the area around University Park Shopping Center. So kind of to summarize some of the important points of the plan. And this was also discussed last week with Planning and Zoning and the Economic Vitality Committee with some other staff members, including Chris Shires from Confluence, who put the plan together and their team answered, answered some questions and we had a pretty good discussion on different aspects of the plan. So if you have any questions? So if you have any questions as I'm going over this, please feel free. But I'm just going to kind of summarize and go over some of the main points of the plan.
Generally healthy is liberal.
West Ridge is completely full, so there's no vacancies there. 114th Street has had recent development. Generally, generally, I'm, I'm making a summary. There's room for improvement, second half of that, room for improvement. Generally, there was some plans in the, in, in the, in the study for residential and mixed use additions to different aspects of, of the study, including one in Clive at the University Park Shopping Center. Pretty much for transportation, pedestrian and bike friendly improvements are throughout the corridor. There's obviously need there. Infrastructure also generally already in place. We'd support improvements with future development where possible. And redevelopment, the market's pretty much going to dictate that again, most of it's built out. There's not a whole lot of land left. There could be some, some infill, but it would really depend on the type of project we're looking at of whether we want to consider that type of thing or not. So you know, University Park Shopping Center, we talked about and looked at, you know, whether incremental development is a good idea or not. Cause again, that keeps that use going or whether to wait for something bigger to come along, redo that whole thing. Confluence planned for that, they gave us a couple layouts for a mixed use, multifamily development. Generally, all the members were supportive of that, that layout that's very exciting, something new there. It connects with the green belt, it's more housing. So all the things that we've kind of talked about with the plan, that's a great place for it. The problem there, as we know, University Park Shopping Center is three different owners. It's very hard to get any of them to, on the phone, let alone to come up with a, a plan and to have something together for a solid proposal for that large of an area. So sending in a city intervention could be possible, but it's going to be difficult and probably down the line. Valley West Mall, obviously we know Valley West Mall is a big part of the University Avenue Corridor and this project. So we're going to work with West Des Moines on future developments that come down the line for them. Possibly use city resources if a project justifies it. Of course, city staff and, and negotiations there are always on the table because the site's very important for both cities. We know that.
Just go back to Valley West Mall, because that's really the big part of this whole study right there. I don't want to pass over that quickly. You know, they, that was on the table for some grants that it was passed over from, from the state right there. What are they talking about as far as, I mean, there was, they had a lot of plans for that. What realistically are they looking at for really realistic changes in the next five years of Valley West Mall? It's already went bankrupt, it's, it's defaulting, everybody's leaving. What are they thinking next two to three years?
That I can't answer. I haven't been privy to those conversations about Valley West Mall. If you want to stop there, I can have some, maybe Chris talk about it, or I could move on and we could come back to it. It's up to you.
No, I, I'd like to have Chris.
Yeah.
That's the big, that's the big eight hundred pound gorilla, right?
I was at Jordan Creek Mall, I can't remember which store it was, but I was walking by and they had a sign out front that said, we are in January relocating to Valley West Mall. Said nobody, right? I mean, but that's what the signs said for their store. Okay.
Yeah, great question. Chris Shires with Confluence, you're consulting on this project. So Valley West Mall, it's one of the reasons why historically this area saw so much growth and development. It was originally intended for single family homes. That's what the original landowners and developers wanted in the area. Another vision came in, we want this new mall. And so that was back in the late 60s, early 70s. It's been a catalyst and so now we know what it is today. It's rough, no way around it. Hopefully with the fact that it goes into in essence, complete failure, bankruptcy. It helps reset its value at a very low price that somebody has the ability to come in and do what I think is a full redevelopment. The big one mall building structure really is outdated, impractical, not usable. Are there additional funding sources needed? Maybe we do also look at this area has a lot of rooftops with dollars, with dollars to spend. So really you imagine this much square foot or land area under one ownership as a really great potential to do something great. In fact, we did spend a lot of time on this process, doing a lot of what if scenarios, doing a lot of TIF calculations. That incremental jump where you could capture TIF dollars potentially could be a really large number. Cause really it keeps going down in value. So even its untaxable value keeps going down as they reassess. So I do think eventually somebody will come in with a really great idea. It's too big of an opportunity to, to pass by. It's not under, University Park's a tough one because it's under multiple ownerships. It's smaller though, Valley West Mall is huge and generally under one ownership group. So I, I think it's just one where hopefully the city, and then I think it's City of West Des Moines. I think it's great if the City of Clive is also a part of that is, can help work with whomever owns it. Come up with a great idea, find that master developer and do some really great mixed use project that's really healthy for everyone. It really is at the center of Maine and Maine. It's a great location. It just needs somebody with some vision and some dollars behind them to make it happen.
Any, any thoughts, Chris, and, and your discussions to, you know, look at the, the Merle Haye Mall model right there as far as being creative right there? Like you said, you mix use developments or is it going to become to some point where, and I know scraping is going to be extremely expensive, but what's your thoughts as far as going forward is, you know, from an investment standpoint?
Yeah, so what we looked at and, and, and some other folks had looked at is kind of a partial scrape. So a part of the structure going away, but definitely the infusion of multifamily residential in essence to kind of buy down the actual raw square footage. Let alone you add residential, that's new customers, that's new employees. So really to make the area a little more viable. In fact, definitely on the West Des Moines side where there's just a little more land area and more vacant buildings available. Do you think there's a lot of value and opportunity into having new multifamily residential at all price points? See the same thing for Valley West Mall. That property would be ideal for entertainment, retail, specialty retail, retail office. But a lot, a big push for multifamily.
Lot of parking lots to move.
Yeah, that, that might be better utilized with some buildings and then a little more compact parking areas. Or even underbuilding areas for the really those higher amenity apartments that people are wanting. You know, you look at some of the projects we're building in downtown Des Moines. Parking is not out front. It's either under the building or a little more, a little more exclusive. So tough one, but there's so much positive going on in the area that that's not the only thing, but it's a pretty key component to the entire corridor.
It's nice to see the West Bank put a substantial investment in that neighborhood.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And the Valley South property, look at that, that went from really being mostly vacant to now nearly fully redeveloped. And I think it's just a matter of time for the two banks on the corner there to see something happen and some change.
Ted? Yeah, if we could go back to University Park and, and Chris, maybe, I don't know whether it's you or Jill, but, um, so I know it's a tough nut to crack with three different owners, right? But is, is part of your recommendation to say if one of those is up and ready to sell, that the city comes in and purchases that? Or how do we proceed with something like that?
That's difficult. I mean, I think it would depend on the project, how much it's going to cost, the city's, you know, current budgeting and where that falls, may not be able to wait forever to, you know, get something like that, depending on what dollars are available.
Are you just saying we just got to wait and see? And I mean, there's really no recommendation at this point?
When are we going to see some general density in that area, Doug?
Gentle density, it's going to have to be more than gentle density on that property. The answer is this. The city at this moment does not have this particular piece of property on its priority list. Right, we're dealing with 86th Street, we're dealing with flood buyout area, we're dealing with LeMan, we're dealing with all these other aspects. So, you know, your specific question of if a piece of property came up for sale, would the city be potentially interested in it? I would say probably not at this point because we are motivated in other spaces. There are opportunities for this piece of property in my mind to get creative with the financing, leveraging things like hazard mitigation funding potentially, leveraging the adjacent green belt space where we might be able to create value add as it relates to that natural resource, that water resource potentially to in essence kind of bite off a piece of the property. But honestly, until we had three property owners that are motivated to do something, I don't see it in the city's best interest to try and intervene.
The likelihood of all three of them being ready to sell at the exact same time is virtually nil, right?
I didn't suggest that they're ready to sell. I'm suggesting that the three property owners are motivated to do something different. That doesn't mean that they sell. It means at some point, is that real estate no longer productive for them? Or they've gotten to the point where, you know, again, maybe the flood does come through. Or these are now 30 some year old buildings. At some point, significant reinvestment is going to be necessary and maybe the rents don't suggest the, that particular course of action. So I do think that there is likely to be some type of opportunistic step down the road in which we may have motivated and willing partners to come to the table. We need to be ready to have those conversations. I think you'll see a suggestion here that we tried to start building those relationships now. So that when that opportunity presents itself, we're ready to go. But I think it would be at this particular point challenging for us to get too heavily involved in repurposing that space. We need to kind of let it come to us, in my opinion. And that really that bigger question that we've been having along those lines is how best to allow that to happen in a way that doesn't have a detraction from the overall area and the adjacent neighborhood space specifically. Because in essence, we need it to kind of continue to be a good neighbor, but you also kind of need it to get to its bottom before something new can come out of it.
Would you agree that as long as they have tenants and there's, you know, they have minimal vacancies, they're not going to be motivated to make change?
No, no commercial property owner typically is going to be overly motivated to chase additional money with those types of risk. So right now, if I can keep that place mostly occupied, even if it is lower dollar rents, that cash flow is in essence, easy. And easy is good. Taking big risk, tearing buildings down, spending lots of money in hopes that you can find the next big tenant or that credit worthy tenant or whatever it is, and be able to keep that going for 15 or 20 years. That's a big risk. And most of these commercial property owners that we're dealing with minimize risk and like easy money.
I think Merle Haye is an example of that, right? It had to get to a bottom before where it is today. And it's starting to climb out of that bottom, but man, it was at a bottom and it got rough before it got any better.
So I agree with some minimum investments though, like Flix Brew House, I thought was a real asset.
And, and there might be several more iterations of opportunities in that space. Again, they may not be as interesting as, as the redevelopment proposal or even as interesting as some of the things that are happening at Merle Haye Mall. It may be more incremental attempts. Maybe the, the Toys R Us owner decides, maybe I will throw a few dollars in it and try to figure out how to divide that space up into a little more manageable tenant spaces. Cause right now finding a 40,000 square foot user of space really, really challenging.
But it scares me to think a Kmart owner could come in there or something like that, right? And do that, I mean, the face looks fine, but inside is nothing, right? And it's just a facade that's a little scary.
Right, but, but those are the, those are the things, you know, in, the city can do certain things and we can control certain things. But in this circumstance, we're suggesting that the, the current zoning, the current development requirements and so forth are, are adequate. And that property owner or the series of property owners may decide to, to do incremental things within the framework of that ordinance. And we have to be willing to accept that.
No, again, that's all along I-63, right? That, that house, that strip mall.
Some, sometimes it's.
Improvements.
Sometimes there are winners and, and then there could be four or five not so great situations before you get to that winner.
Other questions for Doug or Chris, otherwise we'll let Jill continue. And it was Halber Statz that was moving from Jordan Creek to their Valley West location. So you can get a good deal on a suit. They're closing.
One option. Never thought I'd hear those words, but.
Continue, Jill, please.
Thank you. Uh, okay. So some other thoughts from the study as well as the group discussion. Again, redevelopment or possible infill development. So that's as we've just mentioned, that's kind of a case by case basis. You don't want, yeah, University Park Shopping Center to go into complete disrepair, but does anything substantial happen until it does? Well, that's a good question. So we pretty much decided on, well, it's going to be a case by case basis of something, it's a good proposal. Something comes in, you know, it's worth talking about, let's talk about it. But generally, if something mediocre comes along or it's kind of business as usual, well, we're not going to obviously drop city dollars for that. We're not going to put in extra resources for that. With something like that center, you know, we're going to be looking for the big change. With some infill, not all once might be possible. That's kind of on a, on a staff level question as well. Sometimes a plan comes in and well, we can do most of these things, but not quite all of it. So can we meet parking? Can we meet our buffer requirements? Can we meet our planting requirements with some of this infill that has come down the line or redevelopment that's talking about? Some of those rules may, may be part of the discussion, especially for a really good project. Do, do, do all those things have to work? Well, maybe, maybe not. Obviously we'd want to upgrade infrastructure, make additional trail connections where possible with those redevelopment or additional development projects. We also discussed, you know, a catalyst coming down the line. Obviously, Valley West Mall is the catalyst if something comes there in the kind of near future. Could be something else, could not, do we wait, do we not? We had good discussion about that. The general consensus was to wait till something comes down the line. That will probably be Valley West Mall, that's on the West Des Moines side. Again, we will work with them and do what we can to see that project come through.
Is it crazy though to think the tail of the wagon, dog, when it comes to university, you know, our property, that property there? If something big happens, it could be the catalyst for Valley West Mall. Or is that just too big that that isn't it? I mean, working in conjunction with West Des Moines to do something down in our corner. Dump start everything, it's right up the hill.
I, my opinion is having something change at University Park Shopping Center would be great for us. It's not likely to substantially move the needle amongst that entire corridor area. Again, that piece of property has wonderful opportunities to be a great Clive neighborhood space. But we are talking about two miles of commercial corridor and many millions of square feet of, of commercial space of which we're talking about 150,000.
So some recommendations. So some recommendations that came out of the discussion and the plan. Some easy things to work with are with West Des Moines on branding. That was one of the kind of low hanging fruits that came from it. If there was a branding to go with the corridor to make it kind of a Valley Junction type of thing and East Village type of thing, that could, that could definitely be something. We've recently had a discussion with West Des Moines about that as well. I think they're actually looking at doing that because we'd obviously want to partner with them and have, have that be cohesive for the entire corridor. It might be difficult until maybe Valley West Mall happens too. There's a little bit of a, a balance there. Do you make a name for something without the something kind of missing? So there could be, there could be some potential issues with doing that, but it's also something to get things going as well. So it could, it could be a, a first step. We looked at really no changes to the zoning code at this time. Right now, we have a pretty high standard for uses for new developments. So obviously not let anything and everything go into something like University Park Shopping Center. You know, we're not looking at doing mini storage just to have something in there. Keep the zoning code as it is. Keep the current uses for TC districts unless you think otherwise. But right now, we're looking at that. Be selective about future hotel conversion proposals. Obviously, we just talked about Sterling Inn. There's some other hotels that have also been a part of that discussion of doing multifamily. Obviously, it'd need to be a very good proposal, possibly something with an attainability factor for residents so we can have more options for housing in our city. So that would need to be a, a pretty unique proposal since there's nothing else like Sterling Inn in the city.
But can I ask a question on that? So what was the hesitation in, in being more open to those proposals for other Sterling Inn types of facilities that are in that, in this area right here? What, what was the hesitation?
Well, I think having it, having it not as be as good of a product as you'd hope it would be. Calls for service, you know, decreased property value, but just
Are we seeing that from Sterling, the Sterling Inn conversion, though?
Well, no, probably not from Sterling Inn, but if it was a different building like Clive Hotel or maybe even a Days Inn or something like that, if one of those came down the line, that's a much different style of building than the Sterling Inns. So if, if that came, it
I was just curious what the rationale was.
Right, right. Yeah, if you, or that's a city's two cents, but yeah, from Chrissy, we'll be able to talk more.
I, I'd be happy to respond to that. And so really think of it as making sure that if we're doing a conversion, that it's purpose built. Because one thing, and, and I've had experience with this, we look at some of the other hotel conversions where they weren't executed very well. They're not necessarily that great of a place for anybody to live. They are a call center for emergency services. They are a detractor from reinvestment from neighboring property owners. So whereas Sterling House, you already had these units that are already set up kind of as independent little apartments with kitchens. So that conversion was a lot more logical. And so when you think of kind of in a traditional hotel floor plan, how well do they convert to individual apartments? Might take a much more substantial interior model. So making sure that's, that is a part of any kind of approval, let alone onsite amenities. That's always, that can be a missing component. And then a little bit harder for you to regulate, but is it a, a, an experienced and qualified property manager? I think that's another thing where you have somebody who thinks they can manage a, an apartment hotel, an extended stay, and maybe they are not well qualified or well experienced and to manage, maintain, properly run that property. I think having affordable housing is an important goal for us as the entire metro. And these can be a sources for affordable housing. But I think everybody deserves safe, quality, affordable housing with those amenities, with those quality property management. So that's really the big thing is, so I, I like how that's said in there. It's be very purposeful and careful with those conversions.
I, I think it's interesting you say all that because that's exactly what we kind of did when we vetted that in the first place, right? We, we were very skeptical to, to start with, right? And it, it took a lot to convince us to, to go that direction. So I'm glad to hear, hear you say that.
Days Inn could be a car wash.
Continue, Jill. Thank you very much.
All right. Also, there's a lot of areas where we can approve connectivity, depending on the type of development or project that's coming through. Obviously, anytime we can make a trail connection, that is going to be a bonus. Anytime we can increase pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, bicycle amenities, that kind of thing, we're going to be looking at doing that. Also, some creative regional stormwater management. Creative is there also, that's coming from the West Des Moines side. So anytime we can get water from that Valley West Mall site in that area a little more contained and, and Clive's managing of that to get our two cents in. If, if we can do some improvements there, obviously, we're going to be looking at that as well.
That's one key aspect I just wanted to stop on for a second. I know we've talked a lot about it around this table, about the stormwater management piece and agreements we have with West Des Moines, with university. That has not fallen off the radar. I want to make sure the council hears that. That is going to be a continued discussion point with West Des Moines. Again, my preference is, is to do it through partnership and agreement and not necessarily having to go to enforcement levels with existing agreements. But if it comes to that, that will be a recommendation that'll come back to you all. But we need to keep, we need to reengage in that conversation. That's kind of been held up a little bit with this plan or this study. And it could be potential catalysts for aspects on our side of the street. University Park Shopping Center being one of them of West Des Moines has a need of stormwater management that they need to comply with. It can be on either side of the street potentially. It could be on our side of the street too, if they're investing in our community. So I, I want the council to stay open to that and, and want you to hear that that has not fallen off staff's radar. That is something that I've had specific conversations with Tom Haddon about. I'm going to continue to have specific conversations about it because I'm not seeing the movement that I want to see from West Des Moines staff on this issue. And so we're going to be bringing that back up again now that the study has been completed to the point of receiving and filing. Because we do need to start seeing movement. Clive needs to start seeing movement from West Des Moines on how do they intend to comply with these agreements? Not twenty years from now, but soon. And we're willing to be reasonable with that implementation, but we need to see movement. We need to see something starting to happen. And so that will continue to be my message with my colleagues in West Des Moines.
Have they shared the results of that study, Matt, with us?
Yeah, yeah, we, and we've shared it with you all. They, there are certain aspects, certain, we'll call it intake points along university where they're exceeding and certain ones where they're not. The ones kind of on the east end are more the ones where they're exceeding. And, and so, again, there's opportunities for us to, we can do, there is a creative opportunity here. Again, it doesn't always have to be on certain sides of the street that we can get to good on some of this, but we need to start seeing some movement soon.
You know, I'd like to, I'm, I'm with you on the soon, right? Even if it's a, here's your rate, and you can buy it down with partnerships, you know, with, with the Valley West Mall and all that, we can reduce the rate. But if we don't put the stick out there at some point, it's never going to happen. I think, you know, I do think you need to sit down with them and say, what's a reasonable cost for us to manage this at this point for you exceeding? As we get going, we can buy that down with these partnerships to a zero or whatever it is. But until they see that, I'm not so sure. We've been talking about this for
A while.
Years and years, and there's no hurry for them. I don't even know if the money will make them hurry, right? They may just pay it, which is fine, and we can use that for reinvestment in some other projects. I think that's reasonable.
Is there anything about pending legislation related to stormwater that would kind of protect them from participating in an agreement with us?
Might make it best here.
I really don't think so, honestly, because this is a governmental to governmental agreement. There was an obligation created through that agreement that established a maximum amount of water that should go from West Des Moines to Clive.
Okay.
They're simply in excess of that. So it doesn't really have anything to do with minimum stormwater standards or legislative requirements or state imposed sanctions of that nature. It is simply a private agreement between the two cities.
Good.
All right. So finally, so what are some next steps? Obviously, tonight, receive and file the study. So we have it, we can refer to it and use it in the future. Continued assessment of the market and economic health of the corridor. That'll be a big one. So we're going to try to keep tabs, so to speak, like Doug was referring to, of those other, those property owners, try to make some connections, get a feel of, of those owners more and other items that are going on in the corridor as those change and develop. So we're not just kind of left behind or a phone call late in the game. Maybe we can get, get ahead of that some. Obviously, partner with West Des Moines on a lot of these things. Like I mentioned, branding, the regional stormwater, Valley West Mall. There's some university I, I thirty-five interchange planning that could be done. So we'll continue to work with West Des Moines on a lot of these items. Since we're neighbors, we're going to have to on it. More redevelopment opportunities, like we talked about, University Shopping Center. If there's changes to West Ridge, hotel conversions, other uses on one hundred and fourteenth Street. There's a lot of things there and a lot of redevelopment opportunities that are going to keep coming down the line. And then obviously, staff is going to look for ways to incorporate those study recommendations as more development occurs. Those pedestrian and bicycle friendly recommendations in there, other uses, if any code changes need made, items like that, staff is going to look at, obviously, before coming to you with those. So if you have any other questions for me or obviously Chris, but tonight, we're looking to receive and file the study. We are complete.
Move to receive and file the study.
Second.
Motion to, in a second, receive and file. Is there further discussion or questions? Seeing that around the table with the council, please vote. And will the clerk please post the vote?
I must be timed out, so I'm a yes.
Can you do a drum roll? We're very anxious. For the, for the vote.
I just got to notice the vote again.
Oh, well.
You're done, both early and often.
Yeah, so Ted likes Chicago.
So I don't know.
Reach over and
I'll do it.
It passes by a vote of five to zero. Let the record show, we have received and filed the university.
He knows it's best to vote with me.
Your honor, did you want to take a minute before we get into this item?
I, I thought we'd go ahead and proceed with this and take a break if we're still going at eight.
Yes.
That's a high likelihood, but I like your optimism, Your Honor. I like your optimism, Your Honor. All right, you can switch over to the, this guy. Yep. Do, do. All right. So tonight, we have the, oh, there he is. Minute and a half, ninety seconds.
Can't have that.
So tonight is workshop number one for city managers' proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget. As we always start off with is the Public Works Department, which is made up of the road use tax fund and the utility funds and a little bit of the general fund. And so tonight, we'll go through this. We have some, some specific items, though. As we get into the financial strategy, which is we review with you all during strategic planning every year, there's a couple of items, you've seen this slide before, but a couple of items that I do want to highlight that in the road use fund, we continue to have some challenges. They're not significant at this point because we have built up some cash reserves over the years. But there is going to be a point in time where the revenues are not keeping pace with expenses. And this is a state revenue that goes into that fund. I'll get into more detail on that one, but I want to highlight that. We're going to be talking about that a little bit in the future. It may at some point soon necessitate a shifting around some expenses to make sure the, the road use tax fund is sustainable for the future. On the utility fund side, the big conversation we've been having over the last year is tiered rate structures for both stormwater utility and the water irrigation structure as well. You're going to see specific proposals on that item, on those two items tonight, along with some policy statements that staff has drafted to really start to speak to the intent of those tiered structures. And we wanted to, I know back in October, we talked about the water irrigation rates. We hopefully, with what you see tonight, we've reflected appropriately what the direction you gave us that night. And of course, Pete, with the Water Resources Master Plan, we talked about the stormwater tiered rates over the past twelve to eighteen months. And so with tonight, we're now getting to the point of implementation, starting that phase, and then public education as well at the same time. So Public Works overview, what you see on the screen here is the staffing levels for the Public Works Department. One thing I wanted to point out, particularly over the last month for our crews, the cold weather ahead of Christmas was rough for our crews, for our guys. And, and something specifically that I wanted, wanted to mention is our, our guys dealing with the water main break when it's negative thirty-five out. One thing that I'm going to be talking with Jeff and Jerry about is these things are happening more when it's getting super cold. And I want us to start evaluating, is there a certain equipment that we need to start getting to put our, our crews in a safer position to deal with these issues in these severe cold temperatures? Whether it's tents, heaters, something like that. What are the other tools that we need? Because it seems over the last three to four years, we've had these water main breaks happen in these super cold temps that has not historically been an issue for us because usually the ground's frozen. It's more when you have this thawing cycle where you start to see water main breaks. So again, that's just a one-off, but something that I wanted to point out that I've been thinking about quite a bit since that incident happened when we were in the middle of snow operations. And then we have a severe cold situation that our crews are having to rotate in and out of their trucks just to stay warm and from the, from the hole, working on the water main. So something that'll be a future consideration, but something that I definitely want to look at is what, what are some now new specific equipment that we need to at least think about for those kinds of situations? But
Didn't that data drive that right? So I'm, I'm with you.
Yeah.
Just how many times does it happen in the last three years versus the last ten years?
Right.
And
And the temperatures, yeah. And the situation, no, one hundred percent. That's, that's also with any kind of proposal like that, we need to bring those numbers to you, yes, for sure. And so that's the something that we want to, we want to take a look at. And so what you see here today on the staffing side is, is SEDEX staffing requests from a full-time perspective in the Public Works Department. One thing that we do want to introduce, and I'll, and Jeff will speak to this a little bit more specifically here in a minute, is this idea of actually introducing seasonal staff in public works. Number of cities do this. We historically have not done it. But bringing them in in the summertime, again, this would be college kids, potentially high school kids, you know, depending on the level of, of what we could get. We tend to have, especially with winter operations this time of the year, this is when our guys are building up their comp time banks and their vacation, and they're taking it in the summer. We are seeing some, you know, it's a little bit harder to get all the maintenance activities done in the core of the summer when we have that. So what's a, a potential option? And Jeff brought this forward to, to me this year of looking at, you know, using seasonal staff to cover some of that versus jumping to a full-time position. I think there is still going to be a need at some point in the future as we continue to grow our infrastructure and build out our community out west for additional operations specialists, as we add water main roads, sewer, all those things. And, and we'll bring that data to you and that justification to you at the time. One thing we wanted to try out as kind of a pilot is using seasonal roles. We do that in the Parks Department because obviously their uptick is very high in the summer with the park operations, something that we wanted to consider and try out in the Public Works Department as well. And with that, I will turn it over to Jeff to talk a little bit about that more in further detail.
Good evening. I'm back. Talk a little bit about public works. You know, Matt showed you what our staffing looked like. Thirty-three and a half full time equivalents. Of those thirty-three and a half, thirty-four bodies, ten of them came on in the last two years. That's thirty percent of our staff that's fairly new. In addition to the new staff, we've had a lot of movement within to replace. So we have even more people in new positions. I want my tip my hat and recognize that we have a new water resources engineer, a new civil engineer, along with a lot of the other operation specialists. It's been a busy year, but we've continued to perform and get things done. We lost a lot of institutional knowledge, but we also gained a lot of new experience and a lot of enthusiasm with some of the younger kids that have come in. So I want to tip the hat to public works, what they've done through everything. When you talk about the long term, one of the things Matt mentioned was staffing is continuing, city continues to grow. One of the things was identified many years ago was that ultimately we would need two more full time operation specialist and another dump truck to keep up with operations. We've come to the point, we don't need another dump truck. We just need the bodies. Our winter operations and when it comes to the seasonal positions, basically in the winter, we allow two people off at a time. We have basically enough people to put one person in every dump truck plus a supervisor. So if someone takes off, the supervisor goes into the truck and is not there to oversee operations, which creates problems in the summer because they can't take time off the winter. When's the only other time they're going to be able to take time off? And that's summer activity. So we have a lot of people gone. The seasonal positions with that, and we'll get to that, is basically what we want to cover. Long term, one of the other things that we really need to take a look at, and it's basically one main item, and that's street maintenance. If you remember the street study, what many years ago it was twenty seventeen dollars. Those dollars don't go as far. And even with the projections of the increased amount of funding that we had, the the PCI data was going to fall. I mean, we just couldn't keep up because we had streets going. It was going to take us some time to recover. So we continue to concentrate on that. We'll continue to work to that. But, you know, long term, that's the main items we'll be working on. So we get into those short suits, short term solutions. That's where the seasonal maintenance comes in. I think we can get three bodies in here, talking with all the supervisors. Probably not going to make them operators in three months. We're probably not going to get them certified for operations, but they can sure help us with driving trucks, traffic control and let the full time employees that we have here get the work done and continue to perform. So again, we probably don't agree, Matt and I, on how soon we need the full time, but I understand it's a funding issue too, but that request will be coming down down the road and something we definitely will need to be able to maintain operations. When you look at next slide, if you would, or do I do it? Yeah, I can do it. Won't go too far then. Utilities, we have the water, we have the sewer. We're in good shape on that. One of the things we talked about was some of the equipment for water. Our water mains are getting to the age where they're starting to break. We have some aggressive replacement, but it's going to take us a while to get there. So e- even with the number that we've had, that number is expected to probably grow a little bit as the older cast iron and ductile iron mains get to their fifty year life. We can expect to see a little bit of an increase in that. They always seem to come at that. Yeah.
A question about that related to what Matt was saying before, as we're replacing these water mains, is there anything we can be looking at that maybe there's materials that can more likely survive these like more extreme temperature conditions? Or is that for newer pipes and newer replacements? Is that really a non-issue? It's just kind of built in?
I don't know material wise that there's anything specific. The PVC seems to have be a little bit more flexible. So in a cold, it doesn't snap, which is a lot of what our brakes get a split or a snap. We also make sure that we get them buried down, you know. One of the mains that we had break last week was only three and a half foot deep, which under pavement is probably not going to survive for long, especially as cold as it was. We need to get them down around that forty-two to forty-eight inch with a cover on them. So we're more conscious of that. Bedding a little bit better, nine ninth court, one of the problems we have with water main breaks there is there's a ledge of shale for lack of better rocky material. They dug down till they hit it and they just threw the pipe on top of that. So, you know, it creates points where it just snaps it at some point when the ground on top stops moving. So that was coming up down twenty twenty-four and we'll get that one out of there and put it in in better shape than it is was put in to start with. So but, you know, for the water mains, there's some equipment there. We continue to look forward. One of the big things that Matt will talk about a little bit here is, you know, keeping up with rising equipment costs. Unbelievable cost and I'll let Matt get into that more detail. But I do want to talk about what we've done with equipment replacement fund. Due to those costs, we've gone back, I think twenty seventeen, we did a study and identified what the replacement schedule should be. We talked long and hard among our staff. We know that the more money we put into equipment is less money for operations. What can we do to squeeze a few more years out? We had our one ton trucks on a seven year replacement. We've pushed it back to nine. Hope to get it back to ten, but small steps to start with. We have pushed all those trucks back to the nine year. And we look at some of our other bigger equipment that we can push back, you know. Anything we can do to, first of all, we want to maintain and can make sure our staff has good quality equipment to get the job done. That that is important. But getting as much good out as we can without increasing the amount of downtime and maintenance that we have. If we push that replacement schedule a little bit and still get the job done, we're going to do it. And I think we've done a good job of that. We've moved a lot of equipment back. The equipment you see this year is one thing I do want to says, I believe sewer tractor, that's the sewer tractor camera. It is what that is. It's not a tractor. It's the camera that we crawl through the pipes, but it is called a tractor camera. So those are some of the replacements that we have coming up. We did have to increase, you know, the amount of contribution from fifty thousand to seventy thousand. We were able to keep that to a minimum by making some of the changes in the replacement schedule. So when you look at our overall budget, we didn't make any specific long term requests. Short term, we kept it pretty simple. You know, as always, training of our dedicate our staff is important. We've identified the ability to certify some staff and with that comes increased training to maintain those certifications and we included that in there. Safety is important and we always continue to do that. So in summary, I think we've put together a pretty basic budget. There's not any new request for equipment or or even small equipment. We just kept it to the operation level that was necessary to do our job. So glad to answer any questions.
Jeff, on that seasonal request for three season employees, how do you come up with three? Why not one? Why not five? What's your thinking behind that?
Well, I sat down with supervisors and I said, you know, what is that number? Where can we use them? Which crews could you use them on? What functions could we use them in? You know, again, they're not going to be an operator. We're not going to spend two months training them till you get one month of good out of them. So those are basic things. And when you're short people, what do your crews look like? And basically, I said, do you need one? Do you need five? Do you need two? And to a person they sat down, I think they did a good job of identifying where they could use them, what functions they could. Typically in the summer, we can have up to five people off. Couple, we'd probably get by without, and and three was the number they felt that they would need to continue operations and continue the crew sizes and be able to get the job done.
Okay, thanks. You say in the winter, you have a two off rule, which I understand, but why not follow that suit through the year, right? Maybe it's not a two off rule, but you've got thirty-three employees working vacations throughout the year and bidding them. You know, why not have a three off rule in the summer instead of you just mentioned a five off hamstring you right up front, right?
Well.
I've got a two off rule per for equipment.
Well, you know, in the winter, the two off rule basically is we got to have people in the trucks and we've got to have snow removal. That's how most public works crews are staffed is based on what it takes for snow removal and how many people you need. And we're there. That creates issues. And I mean, it's one of the things we struggle with now is everybody wants the same days, you know. Nobody wants to take just Wednesdays off, you know, you want a Friday, you want a Monday, you want a long weekend. When you get to the summer and we've restricted, you know, the winner, they've got a lot of people. It's a little better now because we have a younger staff. They don't have as many hours, but a few years ago when we had a lot of hours, you know, everybody wants the same days. They want to, you know, take those days, maximize their vacation, put them around.
I get that, but it just can't happen, right?
And we do our best to, you know, to identify that and
I don't think we would be able to do that. I I don't have the numbers in front of me, so I can't. I think we need to to study it a little bit more. We do. I think we have enough comp time built up that it might be hard for us to restrict it and get through all the vacation and comp time in the summer. But I think that's something we can talk about.
There's every time you have five off, you have six off, right?
It could be four.
You have two off, you have three.
Yeah, could we? Could we have some kind of restriction?
No, no doubt. We can look at that. You know, one thing that I do want to think about and, you know, we're trying to make an environment where our employees are happy, you know, make it five that great place to work. And we have a lot of employees with small kids, families, school related. If you want to take your time, when you take it, you want to take it with your family. You want that summer vacation and that's why we get a lot of people in the summer too, in addition to not letting them take the winter vacation. Spring, fall, you know, they can take it, but your family, if you want to do something, you you like to do that too. So it's something we need to work out. Operations come first, no doubt about it. We need to make sure that we address that. Those numbers can be looked at and we'll sure take a look at them.
Jeff, I'm sure it's also a competitive environment out there with other communities going after staff. And I know some of our recent hires were from other communities as well, and it goes both ways right there. So I can see how that could fall into a trend to keep that work life balance going as well. So I.
It's tough. I mean, you deal with it, you know, everyone deals with it in their jobs and it's something we need to look at. Something we've had is a good question, something we need to evaluate.
Our hope was that trying out this kind of seasonal pilot is to see, see what that gets us. And if that isn't meeting the need, you know, then maybe we do need to look at, do we have some only limit to three or four off at a time in the summer, just to make sure we can keep that 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 size of crew to continue to operate the main maintenance activities because that's really the threshold is trying to keep that crew. But I'm optimistic about the seasonal approach because a lot of the times, you know, when you're especially when you're doing road, you know, road work, you know, you need to have so many, a minimum number of guys to be able to have the appropriate safety control. But one of that could just be a kid driving in a truck with the flashers on and he just has to stay far enough back. He doesn't need to know how to run an asphalt, you know, machine or things like that. And so is there some low hanging fruit that we can test out with this this seasonal approach? That may get us there and then that may get us there for this immediate need. And then because I do agree that I would prefer not to, if we don't have to do restrictions on staff in the summertime, if we can find other solutions that are economical, I'd like to start there. And then if we're not meeting the needs, then we can look at those kinds of options. We know we have to do that in the winter. If we're going to try to run twenty-four seven snow crew operations like we did for four days straight, right before Christmas. We need to be able to do that to serve our community. But can we try some some of these ideas in the summer too to eat the needs?
I for one, I for one like the out of the box thinking guys and I applaud you for putting these efforts out there, right? Look, if it works, great. If it doesn't work, then we try something new. But, you know, it's a cost effective measure for immediate impact. So I like to see that kind of out of the box thinking right there.
Help us a little bit with, you know, seeing what that impact of additional employees would do for us during the summer, how much more we can get done. One thing I do want to qualify or is that two off means two people can have it that are not available, meaning you can schedule it ahead of time, you can be scheduled off and we will not be able to call you because you are on vacation. We have others that you can ask for it off. And if you come in today and say, I want tomorrow off and we look out, it's going to be able to work, but no snow in the forecast, no nothing that we would need you. We can grant it, you just can't plan for it. So there are those that we work with. You know, same way in the summer, if it's five and it's a rain day and we're not working and a couple of other guys say, hey, can I have the rest of the day off? We will work with them that way. So, you know, it's not a exact if you ask, but we do work with them the best we can.
Thanks, Jeff. So as Jeff alluded to, we talking a little bit about cost inflation, equipment inflation. So as he mentioned, one of the things that we're looking at doing that we're going to, we're going to need to do because of what you see on the screen here is increase our contribution from both the utilities and the road use fund to our capital equipment budget. So we have a internal service fund, our capital equipment fund, which receives revenues from all the cities operating funds to support our equipment purchases. So it's kind of like our internal bank and how we finance our equipment. Typically, what we try to do, and the dump trucks are the biggest piece of this, the five tons, is have the three utilities and road use all kind of split a quarter of the expense of those trucks because they're used in all operations. They're used in snow removal in the winter. But just like we were doing in Indian Hills, they were doing a stormwater project, they're dealing with a water main break, they're dealing with a sewer. So those trucks get used across all of those purposes. So one thing that we've done this year, and you're going to see this in the cash flows for each of the utilities, we historically had contributed fifty thousand dollars from each of the utilities per year to the goes into the CEP just for to support the dump trucks. We're increasing that to seventy thousand because of what you see on the screen here in terms of the escalating costs. Thirty-eight percent increase over four years on those dump trucks. And that's fully equipped. So that's plows, hydraulics, that's everything fully loaded. That's not just the truck chassis. So that's that two hundred and seventy, probably two eighty, two ninety here pretty quickly, cost number for these trucks.
Are these costs like, are we expecting these to be basically permanent new costs? Or is this still potentially temporary because of inflationary?
I do not see them going down. I think that's the case with all of our equipment. I think I do not see any of them going down, unfortunately. I would love to say yes to that. So so again, we're trying, one point that the main point I want to make with this slide is that right now in your but in our budgets, we're absorbing these costs. We're absorbing these inflationary costs. So what you'll see with the general fund budget, you know, maintaining the current debts, the current tax levy, which is what you'll see in three weeks. And we have the same story in the general fund equipment. We've got these, there, some of them are going up quite as much as the dump trucks, thankfully. But they're going up. And so what we're trying to present to you is we're absorbing these costs right now. Don't know how long we can do that for, but we're doing our best to absorb these costs.
Pulling that out of reserves, Matt, to absorb these costs.
Well, in some cases, our revenues are keeping pace. Now, the utilities, for example, what you'll see with the rate recommendations, the rate recommendations are helping us keep pace with that. But what I would offer with those rate recommendations, particularly the water and the sewer utility are below inflation in terms of the the rate increases and we're still able to keep fairly good reserves. So I I feel comfortable with where we're at with the utilities and and road use is going to be the question mark out of probably all the funds right now because it has one revenue source and that's the road use tax from the state. And as you'll see on the next slide, our revenues are going up about two and a half percent a year. Our expenses are going up about three and a half percent a year on average in the road use tax fund. Those that expense increases is is we're keeping that down pretty good, but the revenues just aren't keeping pace. So something's got to give at some point. And with road use tax, the only thing you can do is you can't put any new revenues in that fund. You have to move expense out if if that fund is not is becoming less solvent. But again, we've got a pretty good cash balance in the fund as the fund summary shows. But at some point in the future, we're going to have to make some decisions. So the the last thing I wanted to mention about this slide is that last bullet is all city fuel costs. So I figured this slide would be the appropriate one. We just kind of lumped. This is all fuel across public works, all of our departments, not just public works. But I wanted to give you kind of the big ticket of this is where we're at with fuel increases, fuel cost increases. Now, that's a number to your point, Councilmember McEnlany, that we hope does come down with what we're starting to see with fuel costs. So maybe hopefully this number looks a little bit different next year. But as your staff or anticipate, we're budgeting to make sure we can absorb those fuel costs.
On fuel, I get it. That's the security number, right? Lanza Loeb blew their budget out of fuel by half a million. I did three dollars. Can we do make some deal with Urban Dale?
And feels the fuel station.
Nation because they're getting it much cheaper than we are. Right? When they're buying it like they're buying. And they're able to contract, but we're not able to with come and go and all that. They've got a fuel station here right by us and they've got a fuel station out west. We just pay our own share, right? We've got a fob, we pay. Just to look into and I.
Yeah, and I know you and I have talked about that.
Going to see that go down substantially with just that agreement.
But yeah, something to pursue, though.
Sure.
Something definitely to talk about, especially since they do have that west, that west station now. I don't know if it's operational yet, but I know that they're.
We got a relationship with the fire department.
Right.
You know, all that could lend to.
All's running live with what we're doing now.
Well, and then, you know, with their where their public works facility is too, it's just down the street from our public safety facility for our other bigger trucks as well in the fire department. So it turns to the road use tax fund. Again, the revenue has been up over the last four years. We did not see quite the bump that we were hoping for in the twenty twenty census on the population numbers. So that did the projections that we had before the census, it wasn't as big as we thought it would would be. We thought we were going to be a little closer to twenty thousand population. So that directly impacts the revenue for this fund. So that directly impacts the revenue for this fund. So as I mentioned, you know, we've, we've had a pretty modest expenditure growth when you look at it against inflation in this fund over the last four years. And revenue is, uh, we had that nice jump from the census numbers. And as you can see in the appendix two, in the fund summary, anytime we hit that population point, you see that big bump, but then that bump's got to, we have to ride that revenue bump for those years in between. What I would tell you is we're probably going to be at our last special census in 2025, right? It might probably be the last time it would make sense for us financially to do it. It'll probably still make sense because we'll still see enough of a revenue bump from population growth. But once we get past 2025, the 2030 census will be built out as a community for the most part. It's not going to make sense to do special censuses from then on out because really this is the main reason you look at it is because of the road, road use revenue. And again, with where the state is going with a whole lot of things and road use isn't necessarily on their, on their list of to-dos, but again, it's a state controlled revenue. We have no control over. So just something to always keep in mind. And also with a lot of the conversions that we have to electric vehicles and that's being encouraged nationwide. How that impacts the road use tax fund in the state of Iowa long-term is concerning because it's gas tax is the biggest portion of the revenue. Uh, do they make it up in registration fees and, you know, charge people like Shirkant more for his electric vehicle on the registration fee side to make up for the gas side? I don't know. But that's something the state of Iowa is really going to have to figure out. The last thing I'll mention on here in terms of the, you know, again, revenue increasing to two and a half percent expenditures at a roughly three and a half is so historically we've had a 50/50 split for the street lighting expenses between general fund and road use. As I mentioned earlier, can't add any revenue into road use, but you can move expense out to, to make the fund. If you have to do, um, some things to make the fund more solvent. What we're showing here is a, is a rough, you know, deficit in the road use fund. We've seen that, uh, be a, a close surplus. Those numbers aren't too high today, but again, depending on where some of these costs go with equipment and other materials in the future, it's something to keep monitoring. And I, I think there might be a, a potential for me next year to be proposing to you to move all this street lighting expense over to the general fund. That's about a hundred thousand dollar expense transfer. But again, would help the road use tax fund a little bit. But again, we've got enough cash in that fund where we, we can take our time with it, but I'm getting closer to recommending that to you. I know I've mentioned that probably for the last couple of years now, but it might actually be coming as a proposal next year. Not in this budget though.
It just went in, what, 10 or 11 years ago? I think I was on council.
You were the one that kind of brought it up in the first place, I think.
And, and we had talked about it, you know, it was something we talked with our legislators about of, you know, if you're going to increase the road use tax revenue, you know, that allows us to do some things. It's an eligible expense. It was a hundred percent in the general fund for, for a long time. And then when we had our general fund challenges, it was something that we could move. And it was moved to road use at that time to help balance that budget. So I, I think there might be, there's probably likely a future where it goes back to the general. But again, that impacts the general fund.
I personally think that's where it should be.
Yeah.
But I get what you're arguing.
Right. It's, you know, at its core, it's a public safety program, but it's an eligible expense in your road use tax fund. All right. I'm going to turn it over to Liz and Suzanne to talk about the utilities.
Hi, good evening. Um, we're going to get into the utilities now for you. Um, so PFM helped us with the cash flows as you have in your packet as well. Um, and the water has sufficient capacity to be stable, to hold the current expenses and the future debt with the small change in rate. So the same rate increase is predicted a year ago, we are holding true to that as well. We're projecting that the irrigation rate, um, would create a hundred thousand dollars in revenue. And half of that would go towards the grants that you wanted to do with the SQR and tree planting and some of those other programs. Des Moines Water Works increased their water rates 10%. So that's in, uh, under the expenses, um, that are in the budget. And then we also increased the internal revenue that Matt was talking about with the CEP contribution from that 50,000 to 70,000 in the water fund.
Expect those to be a yearly 10% increase. I know we've seen that in the past.
That is what we're projecting in the CEP at this point. Five, five percent right now, but, right?
Regional. If, if it, if it stays the way it is and the regional thing doesn't happen, which I would say that that's, it's a matter of when, not if that happens now. I think we're that far along. We aren't going to see those kinds of increases who, under a regional setup. And that's what we showed, I think it was back in February of, uh, last year. That the regional option is beneficial for a community like Clive in the long term. I even, I even would say, even if it takes another extra year to get there, we might not see 10% next year. Cause one thing that Water Works was doing was playing catch up in their cost recovery model for communities like Clive and, and those that were heavier irrigators that didn't have that as high of a base use, but had the high irrigation use, they were ramping up the rates to make up for that. Cause they weren't completely cost recovering from us, at least based on their analysis. But they make the decisions as the board of trustees. So when we're part of the rate model discussion and decision-making, I don't think we'll be seeing 10% increases. But I say that with a caveat of there's still a CIP of a regional authority to be approved. And just like the WRA, right? There's, um, it, which would be a very similar model to this regional model. We've got some big drinking water production decisions as a region to make that is going to impact rates. But based on what we know today, we shouldn't see those kinds of purchased water rate increases under the regional model.
Some new headquarters to build too.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, actually you're, you're up next. So I had to move you into the, because she's going to talk about the cash flows there.
Yeah. So, uh, we did, uh, model out the tiered irrigation structure. Um, that was the big change, um, going forward. And so for residential, settled on three tiers, um, that the council recommended. And we're capturing around 40% in that first tier of the, of the kind of the average, we, I think we did five, six years historical, took the peak year, which was I think 21, um, and looked at, so 40% of the customers fall in that first tier. Um, we capture the next 49% in that second tier with only just 11% being in that top tier over 30,000 gallons, which residential, that's a lot. But there are, there are some that are using that. Um, and then for the commercial tiers, I'm just set on the two tiers, I'm capturing, um, 80% in the top tier and then 20% in the bottom tier. And then 20% users in that top tier over the 200,000 gallons for commercial. The, obviously trimming the peak, that's a really important issue as we go into the central Iowa Water Works discussions. So that's obviously going to sort of, we were, the, the formulas and all that stuff's being worked out, but that has a really significant financial impact in the new model for the regional water. Um, so I don't know if there's any questions.
Well, this is probably more for Matt, but, um, so this is primarily going to be captured for folks who have a second irrigation meter, right?
That's the only way.
That's the only way to capture that. Do we have any sense for how many don't have that, but may have an irrigation system?
Very few.
Yeah.
We require the irrigation meter. So.
I don't think I have one. I'm just saying.
Do you have an irrigation system in your lawn?
Yeah, but I don't have a second meter.
I thought it was required for new development. Sorry.
No, it's not required, period. It is a practice that's supposed for property owners to advantage of.
Cause yours is going through the system. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sewer on yours.
Not everyone, but that's why.
Yeah, that's a good point. So there's very little incentive for you not to have an irrigate. There's, there's very little incentive for you to not have an irrigation meter. The reason being is you're paying sewer on that water.
Okay.
So when you have an irrigation meter, we don't charge the sewer on that same usage. So you're paying more is what I'm getting at.
I haven't used my irrigate in nine years.
So then you don't have a problem. But yeah, that's why we have this separate option. And one thing to point out on here, um, in terms of the percentages, right? So when we talked about this in October, council's direction was, Matt, let's keep the tiers simple. Let's make sure they're small at first because we've got, again, regional water coming and we want to give ourselves flexibility if we need to increase it and match. You know, what's the peaking factor that's going to be implemented on us for surcharge for irrigation? We don't know what that's going to be today. That'll be a regional water board decision. So one thing we were trying to be intentional about is historically the commercial irrigation rate was higher, is obviously higher than the residential. So that first zero to 10,000 gallons, you're paying the base water rate still, like they are today. So that's what we talked about the last time. So that zero to 10,000, which again, getting a large chunk of customers, they're not paying a premium on their irrigation. But when you get to step two, that's a 15% premium. So now you've got almost 90% of the customers and then you get to the top 10%, that's a 50% premium. So again, going back to the principles that are in the appendix of, uh,
cause that's your next thing.
Thank you. Sorry. I kind of jumped ahead is again, back to those policy priorities of environmental stewardship being number one and those other three coming right behind it. So we tried to structure that based on the feedback we heard from you all, keeping it simple, but then still meeting this, but giving ourselves breathing room. If you all, we all need to make some adjustments to it, depending on what the regional water decisions are related to irrigation surcharges or peaking surcharges, I should call it. So that's, so we're trying, hopefully the rate structure that we showed you corresponds with this policy statement that we've included in the packet for you to look at. We've kept it pretty simple at this point. But what's really important about these policy priorities that Pete will share when he gets to the stormwater too, is this is how we're going to be messaging it with the community in terms of the public education over the next, you know, pending on your blessing of this. I know you still have votes to make related to it, but we want to start educating the community over the next three months, three to four months on what is coming for the summer. And also this is a 12-month rate as per your direction back in October. This is all year round. So again, you, you could hit some people in March or May or September who has a new house and a new lawn and is watering sod. They're going to pay the premium, just like somebody in the middle of the summer would.
I think it's important that we had, if we do keep it simple here, especially on the, the front end, because we do have to communicate it out. So
Right.
it needs to be simple, uh, intentionally, I think.
Right. So I know this is one the council's been asking for, for a little while here. And now we're getting to the point of the details and how we're going to implement it.
I think most people are going to understand.
Okay. The next slide is, um, our current rates. Um, so I wanted to show you that Clive moved up a couple of spots actually ahead of Ankeny and Nor- Norwalk, um, for the residential rate and for commercial, we stayed about that mid, um, mid-spot. Um, we continue to stay mid-tier, which is always good, but we are showing that the next cities are not too far away either. So.
And then as you look at, um, with these future rate increases, this is the 3%, um, that is roughly $1.20 per month for a water bill, the average usage around 5,000 gallons per month. That's a 3% increase. Um, there's a little bit of a flip, um, before, um, Ankeny. But I will say that's before Ankeny does their water rate increases that are more than 3%. So, um, this is just moving the city of Clive before we take into account anybody else's rate adjustments for the year. So that's an important asterisk on this slide. So.
Suzanne, I want to be fair to the chair of the council that we're probably on the lower end.
Yes.
Of rate increases that the metro communities are.
Yes, with the 10% Water Works increase, most communities are increasing more than 3% in the metro.
That's a fair statement. I thought you were going to share what Incaney's percentage was. Probably shouldn't ask you to do that. Okay. So under, um, now we're onto the sewer, um, utility rates. This is just a summary, of course, of the revenues and the expenditures. The budget shows no significant changes to the internal costs that we have associated. Um, outside factors really are going to be impacted by the WRA. Um, and we know that their debt is going up as well. Um, we're projecting capital projects in the future years to be part of, um, sewer main replacement program. So, um, in the past, we, uh, we use $200,000 of road use funds for our capital and we were unable to do that with the road use funds, as you heard from Matt and Jeff earlier. Therefore, we're, uh, looking at the sewer fund and what utilities need to be done underneath the, the infrastructure projects in order to get those, um, incorporated with sewer funds. Um, and then the staff is proposing a 2% increase, which is showing, um, you know, in the past, we had a 3% increase. So the, the, um, models and this, and the cash flows that PFM had showed you in the past was that we were going to maintain a 3%. Where we're able to reduce that down because we have a good fund balance going forward here.
You think Clive's here, the WRA going down?
Say that again? Yeah. Oh, yes. Yeah.
With new communities that are coming.
That's coming on board. They will. Yes, they will.
By the vice chair of the WRA.
Yeah, our contribution, uh, our percentage of the flow, the WRA flow is going down. And that helps us in two ways, helps us on the operating budget side. Now, what I would tell you, uh, WRA's out, overall expenses are still going up.
Their debt's going.
But our percentage of it.
Yeah.
So one part impacts the operating, the, uh, uh, which is just the regular flow. And then the flow to the actual regional facility is also going down. So that helps us on the debt side. But the costs are still going up overall. We're just a smaller percentage of it than the faster growing communities where their flows are going up faster than ours. So I think it was roughly one or 2%, if I can remember correctly, but in, in terms of something like that, that ours is actually going down as a percentage of the whole, because others are outpacing us, which it helps us.
Grimes came on.
And gr- and Grimes connecting. So when they have flow, our number's going to go down even more. Sewer funds in great shape. The couple of caveats that I'll add to this is we are still trying to be strategic about for road reconstruction projects, where there is a sewer replacement to happen underneath it of how we can have the sewer utility pay its fair share for those road reconstruction projects. Again, I know it's a priority of the council. Can we, you know, Matt, can we find a little bit of more resource to come to that? When we have those, those sewer replacement projects under a road, it's justifiable to say, well, the sewer utility should pay for a portion of that road above it. Cause it's the only way you can get to the sanitary sewer, which is in the middle of the street. We're going to find, we're going to be looking for those opportunities as, uh, we already are in the CIP that you recently adopted last month. That will continue to happen. We've built some of those costs into this cash flow. Million dollars a year. We're not doing a million dollars a year in sanitary sewer replacement. But we've built the fund in a way to be able to withstand more of those costs going forward. The sewer funds in, in really good shape. I always note with Urban Dale, there's a property tax levy that buys down that rate.
Yeah. Thanks for seeing that. So here are your, so here are your current rates and Clive moved up a spot, um, ahead of Johnston on both the commercial and the residential rate. And again, what's interesting, I had the note here that, um, that Grimes will be joining on. So you'll see that they jump up, of course, or I should say, actually they'll go down in their, in their rates as well, because they'll be higher, much higher. So.
Yeah. So when we look at the future rates, so that 2% for the average residential user is roughly 82 cents a month. So that's again, for an average bill around 5,000 gallons, uh, so it's water sewer combined, we're still right around two bucks, um, per month. Um, and then the tiers, um, looks like Grimes and Johnston are the ones that'll be moving around. But again, those are before their rate increases. Grimes just did a multi-year 15% rate increase each year. So obviously they'll be, uh, moving further down that list. And so Clive will, will stay kind of in that mid-tier, I would say lower to mid-tier for the, for your sewer rates moving forward. Yeah. And, yeah, Urban Dale does buy that down with taxes. And none of the other rate increases for any of the communities are included in these numbers. So this list will look different on July 1st.
Right. Right. Okay. And if you have any questions about sewer, we're going to move on to stormwater utility. Um, this reflects that the city's, um, substantial increase in investment in the stormwater activities, the flood mitigation, planning and projects, um, grants and the incentive program starts at $10,000 in FY23 and it ramps up 10,000 a year. So we included that in the budget. PFM projected a 10% increase, uh, one year ago, but we are actually proposing an 8% overall with those tiers, with the tiered rate structure. So, um, by looking at that, originally we were thinking of cost sharing, of staff with the general fund, but due to the pressures with, with that fund, holding, holding off on that for now. So seven. All right. Here's the tiered rate structure. I think Suzanne, you were going to talk about.
Yeah. So, um, so the tiered rate structure is generating, um, extra cash flow. Um, in the first year of 134,000, in the second year of 150,000, and then moving to about 165,000 per year where it's going to stabilize. So that's pretty significant revenue annually, um, with the tiered structure going forward, that will go right into, um, capital projects for the stormwater fund. So I don't know if there's any questions. I don't know if we want to get into the specifics, but, um, but the average changes in the monthly bill, it actually is a reduction for the res, for the small residential. And then increases you can see in lines 15 through 22 at the bottom of that page there. Um, and then it's some, you know, the largest increase would be to the large 15 year, you were larger would be $11 a month.
15. Yeah. So you kind of see that here in this areas where the rates are being proposed.
Is there a question?
Well, you can't see it there. Also note there, if you're wondering how many households we're talking about in the middle of that chart, if you look under. Budget there, sort of that middle square, you can see it's about seven hundred and forty-eight households that would be in that low tier. The vast majority, four thousand, seven thirteen, that'd be in the middle and seven forty-eight in the high breaks out to about twelve percent, seventy-five percent, twelve percent, more or less.
One thing I wanted to note with this too, with this rate structure going forward and the opportunities it's going to present. Is we are looking at, and you saw a little bit of it in the CIP is historically, we've been trying to do about a half a million dollars in capital. We're looking to up that with this rate structure. So by the tail end of the CIP, we could maybe get closer to six to seven hundred thousand. Again, I know that was a priority of the council of, we need to be able to do more capital on a cash flow basis. Now that doesn't mean that there might not be a big stormwater project that comes along. Where we can, we issue debt against this. That could be some of that usage. And also, as we mentioned in the previous slide. This fund is supporting the creation of the natural resources team in the parks department. So again, we're in the midst of interviewing and hiring for the first of the two operations specialists this budget. January one of next year proposes that second one. And then what you'll see in the general fund proposal. For leisure services is an existing operations specialist getting promoted to a crew leader on the general fund expense. And that will make up the three member team of the natural resources team focused on all things green belt, all things BMP maintenance management. Things that Pete's talked a lot about and everybody's talked a lot about over the last year. This utility is the primary funding source to support those staff efforts.
Good segue for Pete, because you're next.
So as you saw in your packet, we've come up with another policy statement. It is a draft at this point and open to additions and revisions. Similar to what we talked about though, with the water utility, there's a, an equity question here that belongs on this list. Folks who generate more stress on the stormwater utility should be paying for those additional gallons or of stress that they put into. The overall stormwater system of gray, green and natural spaces that safely convey water through Clive. In addition to that, we know that this utility can support improving the way that that broader conveyance system works. The most efficient place to deal with stormwater is where it lands. So the more we can incentivize property owners to catch and infiltrate where it lands, the better the entire system is going to perform. We also, as the final points, know that we have big infrastructure resilience and risk mitigation challenges in front of us. In the future, as the amount of stormwater we're dealing with keeps increasing and the power of that stormwater keeps increasing as we add more square feet of impervious. To the broader watershed. And all, at the end of the day, this is about humans thriving. The storm, the stormwater ultimately flows down into our source waters in Clive. And we need to make sure that we're doing our part to take care of that. And also protect the other places where that water flows, including the beautiful amenity that is the Clive Green Belt, the identity of the city of Clive. So those are some of our guiding policy state priorities as they're structured right now. There are some, a number of other tactical considerations that we need to consider, and two of them are identified there on the slide. First, this would be all year that these rates would be in place, but if we're going to do that. We need to be practical about when we introduce the changes and don't just kind of introduce them throughout the year. We want for the residential customers especially. To say, all right, here's your rate for this coming year. So if you added a big piece, a new big patio or a pool deck. And you added a lot more square feet of impervious in September. The way that we're proposing to do this now is that you would sort of roll with the tier that you're in. Through the fall and winter, but then when we get to the spring, we'll have a moment when we have new aerial maps that we consider. That will then move people appropriately into different tiers. And that when you get your June bill. That would be the time, the only time in the year when you would see a big change in your tiers potentially. Keep it simple. Yeah.
Any, any thought on anticipated administrative burden to people that want to contest? You know, their, their classification and.
So a couple of points there. We think the first year of implementing this is when we'll fill most of that administrative burden. Most residential property owners aren't adding massive new impervious to their properties with a lot of frequency. We'll have some of that onesie twosie, then we'll have to deal with that. But the big year is going to be this first year. We don't want to put an unnecessary burden on residents. If they, we use our aerial maps right now to come up with this estimated square foot of impervious roof. Driveway, sidewalk, pool deck, you name it. Those aren't precise down to the square foot. There's some variance. If a property owner comes to us this spring and says, I think that our square footage is actually less than what you say it is. If they can come with some reasonable documentation, not a full survey, which would be enormously expensive, but reasonable documentation. We'll take that and then evaluate and more likely adjust down to the lower tier for that property owner.
I'm assuming as we go through this process, we'll, we'll get a better definition of what that reasonable documentation is going to look like for, for property owners.
That's a lawyer asking those questions. I'm like, let's just look at it. We're good. It's good.
So this is like a lot of change. It's about getting sort of folks through that process of accepting the change. But we don't want them just to be people who begrudgingly pay. We also want them to be people who are partners in making this better. Because even with these changes, the expenses that we have in our future, the challenges we have in our future, just thinking about flood mitigation are so huge. That we're going to need partners to come alongside with us. So we don't want them to leave thinking the city did something unfair. We think we've outlined here something that is fair. We want them to hopefully agree and then think about ways they can improve. With their, improving their stormwater management, their water resources management. There is one group of folks though, who I anticipate will have some particular. Questions about this change. If we move forward with what staff is currently outlined in the policy document, and that's our homeowners associations. Private, our commonly held impervious square feet in a homeowner's association, like a private street today is off the books. Doug, I got that right? Correct? So if you're that HOA that has private streets or has a private pool for, that everybody uses together or another big area of a square feet. They're not paying anything on that today, but what we're proposing is to move those groups. Into an arrangement similar to what we do with commercial properties with multiple tenants, but common square. Feet of impervious, like a parking lot. In those situations, those common areas are measured. And then divided up among those tenants who are paying a stormwater utility fee. This would be then divided up and assigned then to the rate payers in that HOA. And that's not the only way it could be handled. There would be potentially the opportunity to send that bill directly to the HOA. For their common square feet of impervious instead. But we thought that for the sake of consistency. And equity, that it would be better to assign that to each of those existing rate payers today.
Those homeowners in that association already pay their stormwater fee.
For their little parcel.
Portion. Okay, I can see some.
So many of them, if they're small enough today, might seek that they're in tier one. But when you add the streets, they're going to quickly potentially move up into some different tiers. And that would be for most of them, a pretty modest increase. If they're in tier one, they're paying seven eighty in this coming year. But if they were in two tier, tier two, it'd be up to eleven fifteen. So only about, you know, a few bucks difference. But if they got moved up into tier three. Then they would be up from potentially thinking they were at seven eighty to something closer to seven, to seventeen eighty-four, which would be about a ten buck difference.
Ten bucks a month.
But currently they don't pay anything on it.
So are we going to be, I'm sorry, are, are, are we going to give the HOAs the option as they, they could take it?
No, I, I would not recommend that. I'm, want to make sure that we can actually implement this. So I think we'd want to come up with a consistent application to all the HOAs.
And I would agree with that. I think you want to go one way or the other.
Okay.
And it could get really messy if you give the option.
Was there like.
But not just HOAs, it's even those like, you know, malls, the strip malls and every.
Yep. Yep. And that's how the commercial properties are handled today with multiple tenants.
But was, was that basically the primary reason as to why we were looking at? Kind of doing that equal split across all the HOA, you know. Members rather than just sending the bill to the HOA and letting them figure out how they want to.
It, I think it could work either way, but we, I. Wrote this initially with the focus on doing it like we are currently doing it with the commercial real estate properties. Because it's a known process for us. But that there is still the fundamental question of, do you do it at all?
What are you doing with HOAs today?
On the common space, they don't pay any.
But they are in their bill on their small spot. So you're already billing the individual.
Correct.
Which is what I was saying. I guess maybe their argument might be, I don't know, I'm trying to think through it. But I mean, they're, they're within their base rate. They're already paying for the public streaks, just like everyone else.
And their own impervious.
Right. Yep. I don't know. I guess I got to.
I'm not comfortable with the streets.
You what?
I'm not comfortable with charging on the streets.
So the, the logic.
Don't do that for.
So.
Live outside in nature.
So I think baked into all of the rates that everybody pays, there's some assumption that there is the. Commonly owned among all the public, public's impervious surface. After that, our guiding principle was people with more impervious should pay more. Because they ultimately use and stress the conveyor system more than somebody with less impervious. We want to account for all of the impervious because we're trying to create incentives here for people to become more water conscious. Do things on their property that would improve how they handle water resources. And we want equity. For folks who have more, they should be paying to use that system. Same way that people who use more water end up paying for using more water.
Pete, am I, am I understanding? So the, the issue that I keep coming back to is not really whether or not. The issue I should pay something, it's more around how are we allocating it? Right? So like you were saying, if you, if you split that up along amongst all the members. And then they get charged, it might, it might shift their tier. Whereas if it goes to the HOA, I'm assuming it would be less likely to, like it wouldn't, it wouldn't change the individual members tier. It would just be an additional bill that they either have to.
Assess to their individual.
Right. The HOA would be in the top tier.
Right.
They would all pay.
Right. And, and they could figure out, do we need to raise HOA dues? Do we just do this as a one time, you know, like that's on them to figure out.
Yep.
That's where, that's where I keep going back to.
So you, I think you articulated that just right. I think I see some nodding on the council that they kind of understood that way as well, but councilwoman Judkins raised a different point where she's in favor of not.
Not the streets. I think the rest of the common space that you've mentioned makes sense.
Maybe I'm not following. What street, is it the private streets or?
Yeah, he said they'd be assessed for the private streets.
Just out of curiosity, why would you exclude the streets?
Because I really don't think that we're assessing that on my property specifically, that I'm as responsible for the street in front of my house. And I just don't think we should differentiate on that.
That, that's a public street though.
I know, but we have them responsible for taking care of other elements of the street. I just think that's too much of a differential. Between the type of property, but for a swimming pool, as he mentioned, or some of those types of things, I think that's a good idea.
I, I am one that would be affected by this, right? And. I guess I see the other side. I would push for. All streets, private or public. I mean. And I do have a property that is in an HOA like that, that has private roads and parking and all that. And so I'd be assessed for a portion of that. I get it. I, I think if it's good for one, it's good for all. So I don't know how you say, you can't do it here, but you'll do it over here. I'm with, I don't care how you get paid. But let's do it one way. And it seems like in HOA. We're going to build the HOA, the HOA is going to give it to the owner. So perhaps just give it to the owner. Right? And each owner gets their share.
Well, what's, which is better, which is the better option for the homeowner? And it sounds, so correct me if I'm wrong here. It sounds like if. If we do the one bill to the HOA, then they're automatically in tier three, which is a higher cost, right?
Most HOAs would likely be in tier three pretty quickly. Just because you're putting all that common space together, it's going to likely trigger you into the top.
So at the end of the day, even if the HOA, you know, parcels that out to each individual homeowner. That, that distribution is going to be higher than if we went to each homeowner directly. Is that accurate?
If I had to give you to you from a financial perspective, we would probably generate less revenue doing it that way. Because if you think about it, if you split out, again, this is, this is why we're having this discussion, because there's a couple of different ways you could do this. If you split out all the HOA common space to the end, you might bump up more than one to that middle tier, let's say. City's going to generate more revenue. Than if you're just sending one bill to the HOA and they're at the seventeen dollar rate per month. Versus six town homeowners that are now in the middle tier that would have been in the lower tier. Again, from a financial perspective, but to, one thing I just want to offer into the discussion about the streets. To council member Judkins' point is. Where, where I could see some justification of not including the private streets is we're not including the public street. In the impervious surface calculation for. You know, anybody who lives on a public street. We're not counting that in their calculation.
Well, with, with one exception, sorry to interrupt. Just that we are talking about the entire conveyance system. The street is part of that conveyance system. The intakes that are there that get down into the storm sewer pipe that's underneath the street or alongside of it. So. And that's why I, I was assuming in all of this, so that's not, not be the shared assumption that. Something about our rate has always been about all of our collective benefit from that common system and all of our collective need for that common system.
Yeah, no, I get that point, but I could see, I can guess, this is why we need to have the discussion because you could, I could see both sides of it because the, the. The base rate, we'll call the middle rate, the middle tier is your base rate. It's similar to the rate that it is today. It's going to be the majority of the property owners. We do, this stormwater utility pays for. Storm sewer take improvements on our public streets, right? When we reconstruct a storm sewer intake, that is being funded by the stormwater utility. We don't do that on private streets because we don't own them. That is the HOA's responsibility. To fix that if it needs to be repaired. So our middle rate is taking into account even for the HOA folks. The, this, this cost of the public street system is baked into that theoretically. So again, I could, I'm just giving you an argument. I could see both sides of it, right? A justification of why you wouldn't include private streets. In that HOA calculation, because you're, again, you're not including public streets on the calculation of the tiers. So that's all I would say. So again, I could see both sides of it. I'm indifferent. But at the same point, what I'm getting at is, is it, right?
Hey, we're breaking.
Well, but I'm also thinking about how we educate, how we educate people and we have a lot of folks in HOAs. And so. Again, one thing you can do. Is you can start somewhere and you can build on it. You don't have to do it all at once, right? So.
I think you made up, made an interesting point though, that I hadn't thought about. The middle tier is actually our base rate. So. By them being in tier one, they're actually getting a discount. So the fact that if we're, we're sending this out to. Each individual homeowner and they get bumped up to the middle rate, well, now you're just going to the base rate where everyone else is paying.
Right.
So that's a little different mindset.
That's not going to be every HOA, because some, some HOAs are, you know, full houses.
Sure.
Like country club and things like that.
Yeah, there's some.
And, and, and they're, you know, like that kind of HOA is going to have some common space. But they're not, they don't have any private streets, for example, until you get to the townhome groups.
Right.
And then they do.
Right.
So even with one and within one big HOA. It's a little, but those are, they're organized differently over there. They're separate. They have their separate HOAs under the big HOA, but. So I'm just, that's again, why we knew it was going to be a little more complicated with stormwater with this piece because of the HOAs.
How do we handle apartment complexes? That be under the commercial, but then how, how do they?
The owner gets, the owner gets.
The owner's going to get one bill, then he's got to figure out how to.
Right. And they're handled under the commercial rate designation. So they're getting charged per year you. So like basically the, what we've been doing historically, they've been treated like commercial property. And so if it's a big apartment complex with big parking lots, we're calculating all the impervious surface and they've been paying that per year you rate. Uh, where historically residential has always just been one year you, no matter what. So apartments are not going to change, basically is what I'm saying. They're going. They're going to be under that commercial rate, so.
One other point that we haven't listed here around equity is that as a percentage of the total square feet of impervious in the city, commercial is less than residential. But the percentage done total fees that they've been paying have been much higher than residential. This move starts to bring that more into sort of a fair distribution depend, uh, based on the different rate, uh, property classes in the city. Not perfect, but something closer.
That equity piece is what I keep thinking about and I don't, I know I'm kind of beating the dead horse here, but I feel like if if we're, if we're the ones parcelling out these common space calculations instead of the HOA, it's it's more likely to push somebody over that edge of one rate or another. Um, and you know, I'm just, I'm trying to think of if you, if you're getting a bill and you think, okay, you know, I've, I've got 4,500 square feet, right? Uh, and then once you add in the HOA, it's like 4,850. Um, that that's a tough. That's something unexpected. It's a tough pill to swallow. It doesn't sound equitable. I don't know. Just on its face.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's not.
But I bring also just pragmatic considerations as well. We're dealing with thousands of properties here when we make this change. There will be people who have questions. It's a massive lift to Matt's point about not having to do it all at once. Are there some things that we say, let's get these right now, the big things right now, knowing that there could be future adjustments that we want to make in the, as well. That sort of to your point, if a HOA looks at this and says, wow, I've got this huge thing I have to do now with each of my members versus, oh, we've got a $17.84 bill for, $17.84 a month bill from the city that the HOA now just built into its budget. The latter there is an easier way for them to kind of swallow it as opposed to having to go and work and explain this to each of their members.
I think that's right. I think it's going to be a lot more digestible if each homeowner just gets a little bit, you know, as opposed to you just got a bill for however many thousands of dollars that they've never received in the past.
Yeah, I I would agree with that. I think individually is better to go than a big unexpected bill from an HOA that then they got to figure out how to parcel it out.
Well, and to 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 point, to the point that we're not talking about moving the HOAs into the treatment like commercial properties.
Right.
They would still be treated as residential, even though they're a little different.
And you're keeping it consistent with what you're doing with commercial in terms of the parsing. And so you have a fallback to this is how we've done it and this has been, this has been tried and true and it's worked for us. So you have something to point to. That's kind of where we were going with that.
But aren't you saying it generates less revenue for the city if you do one bill to the HOA versus parcelling it out?
I think it'd be safe to say you probably would. Because again, the HOA, let's say, again, let's say if you're counting private streets, I think that's still this. I I would like direction from the council on the private street issue before we leave this. But let's say we're including private streets in it. Private streets, common space, you're going to get over 4,800 square feet really fast. So they're going to be at the top tier 1784. They might even be double or triple that number with a, if you're including private streets. So if, but if you took that, let's say it's 12,000 square feet versus 4,800. Well, if you split out that 12,000 square feet amongst all the different property owners, you're probably going to bump some of them up to the mid tier. They're going to be paying 1115. So let's say you have 10 that are paying 1115 versus one bill of 1784. You're missing out on revenue. Again, I don't think that's the reasoning why you do that. I think there's the other, the other policy discussions are more important than that piece, in my opinion. And we're not talking about a 50 HOAs in Clyde. We don't have that many.
Yeah, but we have impact on the budget is.
It's not, it's it's nominal. I wouldn't worry. But again, it, but to your point, it does, it is different.
Just to clarify, this is, this is a set fee per month, right? It's it's not like usage calculator, right? It's just.
Right.
You're in that tier, it's 1784. If you're in the tier below it, it's 1115. It's.
And you may stay in it forever unless you're at, you know, 4,700 and then you add a patio of a cu- of concrete patio or pool on the backside of your house. And then we do our flights and see that, you know, with permits, see that that happens and then may bump you up to large. Otherwise you may stay there the whole time.
So to that point, like, let's say, you know, kind of what like Pete was talking about, let's say, let's say I have a patio project and I'm at that 48 or 4,700 or whatever. Is there, you know, if I did like pervious pavers or something, something along some of those sustainability projects that we talked about? I'm assuming that's a, that's another touch point that we can say, like when they go to file that permit, that's another touch point where we might be able to say, hey, have you thought about this program? Because you might be able to avoid, I know that's a little bit further down the line because we've got, you got to have data, but that is a potential possibility, right?
Yeah, you can imagine the scenarios or like on my house where I would argue, can't count my roof or my driveway because I actually divert all of those into my rain guard. Now, what we aren't proposing now is to actually allow that type of crediting. Um, but it would be an interesting conversation to have in the future if we were trying to really align incentives to get folks to apply those best practices.
Let's see, and this is where I keep coming back to that HOA, like those, those, those homeowners, they're not going to necessarily be able to dictate how the HOA, you know, builds out those additional spaces or, you know, redoes their pool deck or whatever. And so that's where I keep coming back to. It just doesn't sound equitable.
Yeah, I guess on the other side of that, I could see that they are members of that HOA and have a chance to chose to be there and have a board.
Manages that HOA and they can make those decisions. So.
Yeah.
So you need decision from us on private streets and then one bill or to each individual tonight?
We would, you don't have to make a final decision, but I would love to get a sense of direction of where, how you as a group feel about the HOA piece.
Well.
Is just because we want to have these policy statements for you. And we need to figure out how to do the implementation of all of this.
Before we go any further, is there a desire to take a five minute break before we continue?
I told you it wouldn't be just 30 minutes.
I feel bad. I brought the whale here to.
Recession for five minutes.
I knew better.
I'll the meeting back to order after our recess.
Five minutes.
Matthew, could we please have the presentation? Okay, so.
We are back live.
Excellent. Thank you, your honor. So tonight, council's discretion on how far you want to go down the path of giving staff guidance on how you'd like to handle these HOAs, but it would be helpful to all of us as staff if we could get some leaning at the very minimum.
Can I ask one more question about it? So as I understand it, if we would look at this collectively as an HOA, and they've almost guaranteed to hit that top rate.
Yes.
That it almost doesn't matter if we say we're counting the streets or not. But the, I'm not sure that's right because I heard somebody say you could have up to four times the 17 teller rate. I don't know what, what triggers that.
Not the rate, four times the total amount of square footage, but it's the, the threshold is 4,834 square feet and above. That puts you in that tier. So we're not charging you more. Once you've crossed that threshold, you could have a lot more.
So even if you had like four times as much, it's still at 1784 is the max.
Eighty-four times the number of units, right?
For commercial per ERU, but for residential, then we would propose to shoot the HOAs as residential. It would just be that one fee, one amount.
Right. But I mean, to calculate their total amount, it would be if they have 200 units in the association, it's 200 times 1784. Is that, or is it just $17?
No, it would be, I think the way that we envision it would be you've got your, let's say we're going to disperse this across all the units as a city. You have a bunch of city, townhomes that are 2,000 square feet. Then you would say, all right, within your HOA, you have 10,000 square feet of common space, square footage. Take that 10,000, divide by the total number of units that you have in your HOA dwellings that you have, and then add that amount to each of the initial, to each of that 2,000 square feet of residential. So that's how they would be bumped up potentially in that scenario into the second tier. So let's say they were like 2,500 or 3,000 square feet of impervious for, per unit there. If they had an additional 1,000 square feet that there were, of common space that was then their responsibility, it would move them up into that second tier.
Whereas, whereas if they're just one HOA bill, they would just get the 1784 and then the HOA would pay it and then figure out how to get reimbursed.
It would be in that scenario, I think, pretty negligible expense for the HOAs. But it would be in that scenario different than the way that we're treating commercial properties with multi-tenant.
So it seems like for the HOA individuals, it'd be better to build the HOA, right?
I would, I would, I believe that would be the case.
Is there consensus on that?
I'm still confused.
I'm with you.
If we're doing one bill to the HOA, how is that calculated? I'm not understanding.
Today, we are not doing one bill to the HOA.
I know, I'm just asking if we were to do that.
Yep.
And it, we're in the 1784 tier and you got 100 units. How are we, it's still just $17?
I see where your confusion is and I'll, I'll fix it right now.
Doesn't make sense.
So the individual townhomes are still getting their bills.
Right.
Just like they do today.
Right.
And they, and they get the flat rate, the base rate like we do today. That would not change. What you would have is there would be a new bill that the HOA board would get for the common space, which nobody's paying for today. It would be one bill. It would likely be that third tier, might be the second tier if it's a small HOA, but it'd likely be the third tier. Of that 1784 a month that they would have to pay in their budget. Their individual townhomes are still getting their bills.
Dollar bill once a month.
Right. With their water, with, and it's on their utility bill because there's, we have HOAs that are paying a water bill. Probably paying a sewer bill. If they have a common building, but they're probably paying a water bill because common irrigation, things like that. So it would get added to that bill.
Why would that be difficult for our billing system?
That, no, that's not difficult for our billing system. That's not difficult for our billing system. What I'm, what I'm getting at is what we, what we wanted to be careful of is having the consistency across all the HOAs. Either we charge all the HOAs for the common space, one bill just to the HOA, or we disperse it amongst all the HOA members. So and just consistency there.
But you can only figure out by meter, right? I mean, how are you going to know what units there are? You get, if you get a building that has one water unit, water meter. You know who the HOA members are.
We don't have, we don't have condos like that though. That are HOAs that are individually billed. In terms of, that are getting, that are getting a water bill themselves. They have to have a water meter to be getting a bill themselves.
Right. The HOA has the water bill, water meter.
Well, if they have a.
If they have a pool or something.
Yeah, for those common spaces, the individual residences have their own.
Well, you're talking about Aspen that has, that is basically like an apartment building. So.
One meter per building.
Right. One, one meter for the whole building. Yeah, that's, those are, those are going to be, those are going to be a unique scenario because we don't have a separate meter. Not every unit's getting individual bill. So those are, that's, I would say that's the one unique case we have in the city. That's a common, that's a condo situation. Fortunate for you.
On the flip side though, so like if we, if we just build HOA like Matt, like Matt was saying, it's just a 1784 probably amount that's added to their monthly bill. If we look at the other side and it's the, we're going to look at the impervious service, surface area across the common spaces and allocate that out to each of the members. Your, and I think this is Matt, what you were saying before, it'll, it's more likely to increase our revenue because you're going to push more people.
Into tier two.
Yeah.
Yep.
One of the other tiers, but again.
We're giving the HOA discount in a way by just billing the one bill to the HOA.
In, in your, like, in what you were saying, like, start small, that to me seems like a simpler process to build the HOA once. And then we can look at, okay, do we start doing some of these credit programs and start doing some of these additional calculations to figure out these other things in my, in my opinion.
I agree.
Yeah, because I, I totally misunderstood. I was thinking it was, if we were at that upper tier rate, 1784, and we had 100 units, then it's 100 times 1784 and we're sending that to the HOA and then they're distributing that. We're talking about 18 bucks a month to an HOA. That's nothing.
Exactly.
And that's not, it's not going to cause any issue with.
So it sounds like we get consensus on that.
Great. Now, the next question is figuring the HOA's bill. Will we look at all of their streets as addition to their courtyards and?
Susan's point, does it make much of a difference if you're talking about that tier three? Sorry.
I think we, we skipped the private streets for now.
Yep, yep.
Consensus?
Yes, yes.
Okay, you got the answers you need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Romo kind of tell us straight this.
That was very helpful.
Thank you.
All right. Well, let's talk about the current rates. The current rate right now is 1042. And of course we stay right at the bottom there with the highest rate. However, we are showing or noticing an increase in those other communities going up from, I think there were some of, most of them were at $5. So they're, they're going up. Suzanne, you have a little bit here?
Yeah. So the new rates, the, the tiers we've been talking about, those will go into effect July 1st. And I would just say, you know, Clive remains to be committed to stormwater improvements and, you know, as such, the, the rates demonstrate that, your commitment. So Des Moines obviously is not on the list. They're that, still the, the highest rate in the metro, but don't know if there's any questions, but I think that's all we have for stormwater. I think you made.
All right. I'll, I've already talked about this particular slide. Again, street lighting. That's going to be something that we'll be talking about next year. I have a feeling. That's the general fund portion that supports the public works activity. Last slide. Your direction. Seasonal operations position, operation specialists or seasonal positions, they won't be operation specialists, but seasonal positions in public works. The rate increases as proposed, 3% water, 2% sewer, 7% stormwater. Irrigation rate, tier grade, structure and policy. Obviously we got your direction on the stormwater portion tonight. And then that addition of that second parks maintenance operation specialist position for the natural resources team. So love to get your sense on these six questions. Are you comfortable with what is being proposed in this budget? As such, staff will move forward and.
Matt, what's the cost of both the, the seasonal operations specialists, the FD and parks?
I'm gonna, I think it was, oh, it was, it was 30,000 overall for all of the, all of the seasonal positions. And what we did with that one is we split it between road use, water and sewer, one position each. Off the top of my head on the operations specialist position, that's roughly going to be full benefits and salary, probably 70, 80,000. That's everything. That's health insurance. That's everything. Probably about 80,000 a year. And what we continue to propose like we did this year is starting it off mid-year, January 1.
Any objections?
I just want to make sure I, number one, we're calling it a pilot. I liked that word being used and it'll be evaluated. I think it's a great way to start a pipeline of potential employees anyway. So.
Right. And, and I know Jeff mentioned that in his memo, very true because, you know, we have a, a operations specialist that we hired is 19. So that is also a big thing for public works because in the last year, you know, it was, the recruitment environment was difficult for operations specialists, both in public works and parks. And we have.
He's going to read this closely and say, oh, you're adding all these people, you know, it does say seasonal and I call it pilot.
Yep.
So we're all good. We're all good.
Thank you, your honor.
All right. I think that, that does it. Reports will go down to you, Pete.
Thank you, your honor. Matthew, if we could go ahead and pull down there. Daily, and Jeff, please correct me if I'm wrong here, but we've got a crew out doing pothole and street maintenance work each day of the week at this point. As long as we can find potholes around here, but so it's that time of year and it's going to probably be a challenge for the rest of the winter freeze loss cycle. Our staff's out there working on it. We'll continue to update the council. Two. Earlier this week, I had a meeting with four, three residents and another person who lives here in the metro who are interested in reviving what previously exists, the Green and Sustainable Clive Committee that had then been rolled into the Wallmark Creek Watershed Association. And they came with a great glowing remarks on the council and the city for the work that's been done on a number of water, other green issues, green belt issues, and they're interested in finding ways that they can plug into that work and build a larger committee as well. I'm not sure what the final shape of it will, will be, but they were friendly and collaborative was what I would say. As they're thinking about how they might plug in to further advance some of the sustainability and green and green belt initiatives and water initiatives that the city has pursued over the past many years. Three, state legislature's in session, two bills already introduced. One was related to stormwater with, which would preempt all state, city and county stormwater regulations and attach it to a ill-defined, it doesn't exist today, federal or state standard, which could not be exceeded by counties or cities. This is the same legislation that was brought forward last year and not to be adversarial about it with the, with the people who proposed it, but it, it just, last time it came forward, it was exposed for not having the sort of building blocks in place to do something. And so we'll follow it closely, but I SWEAP is already organizing to kind of call out the same facts that were called out last time about the sort of factual lack of basis.
Do we know what their motivation is for that? Why, why are they pushing that? I mean, certainly they have their reasons. I just.
Yeah, I, yeah. And I don't want to speak for the home builders, but this is, I'm sure in their mind, a cost of business. And they in general want to decrease the cost of business associated with compliance with government regulation. Finally, we're getting ready to engage with our friends at the Harbach neighborhood so that we can talk with them about our stormwater partnership program, water resources partnership program. So later on here in January, we'll be mailing out to those neighbors in that area to talk about soil quality restoration trees. And for a few of them, some other practices that would be a good fit.
Anything else, Pete?
No, your honor. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sweet cut. A quick update for DART. So they are, they did approve at the last meeting, the firm that's going to be doing the CEO search. I forgot my notes, so I don't remember the name of the firm, but I can get that to anybody that's interested. They, they did look at a, they looked at three different firms before they chose that one and they, it sounds like all of the members on that committee were in, in agreement that that was the best choice. The number one issue that they have right now is their diverse, diversification of funding initiatives. And so I think the way it was put by the, by the Dart lobbyist was you got to pull out all the stops and call in all your political chips to get some, you know, time with legislators to talk about why we need this diverse, diversification of funding. And one of the things that Dart is, is trying to push for is a hotel motel tax. Obviously the hotel lobby is not for that. But you know, there, there was some good data shared, which I think there was a packet sent around afterwards. I can share that around. But there's some talking points about how other communities have, have this hotel motel use tax and they haven't seen a drop off in, you know, use or, or, you know, bookings in hotels and they're comparable metros. So they're, they're trying to get as many proponents and partners to, to send that message as wide as possible to state legislature there.
I would say on that one, if I can, you know, for Eric, you know, there's a myth going around that CBB slashed your directly or indirectly were opposed to that. And maybe to get an explanation because I think it's, if it's a myth, it should, let's get out. Yeah. So let's get out in front of this and say why or why not? And I think it'd be helpful if, if CVB sees that it's an important aspect of the community, that they go forward helping Dart, you know?
Could be an advocate.
Right. And so I think that piece is missing. I, I do worry when they say, throw all your chips in, because I've heard them say that too. And as this individual cities, is it really where you want to throw all your political chips? Because they are serious when they're saying your political capital needs to be spent on this this year. So is this our one thing? Because it's going to be big if, if it's going to go.
It's a big ask for sure. Yeah.
And again, as you indicated, last year, the hospitality institute, they had a special group forum to oppose it.
Yeah. And, and there was talk about that, that group and, and maybe talking to a few of the more vocal members of that group. And, and the, the idea was not to necessarily make them advocates because that just is unreasonable, but maybe that they just quiet down a little bit more if, if they're willing to.
I think that's where CVB, if they choose, I don't, I don't know if it's advantageous for them or not, but if it is, that's where I think they could help. I'll have a discussion.
And then one other thing I wanted to mention, there are some changes that are being proposed by Dart to a couple of the routes that affect kind of the western side of, of Clive and the Jordan Creek area. Its routes 72 and 52. So 72 goes along 60th Street and University Avenue to Valley West Mall area. They're, they're going to decrease the frequency of that route to 70 minutes, which is 10 minutes slower. Then route 52 would be realigned to try to make up for that decrease. And then route 52 would change along University Avenue, 60th, Vista Drive and Jordan Creek Parkway between Valley West and Jordan Creek Town Center. And it would, it would replace some of the interstate segments covered by route 72. There's a better explanation of this on a website. If you go to ridedart.com/june, that's when these changes are supposed to go into effect, but they are asking for public comment in the meantime. And then there's two public hearings on it. One is the, one is the 17th at noon. That's a, that's a virtual meeting. And there's a Zoom link on that website. And then on the 18th, there's an in-person meeting at the West Point Library in the, on the second floor. But again, that's all on the website.
Have there been further discussions on facility replacement?
It, it came up very briefly, but it got subsumed by some more discussion around that diversification of funding. And that's kind of the, that's the, you know, area that it came up in is kind of the write-up that was done about that facility and how that might hurt some of these discussions about diversification. But it really wasn't, it wasn't, unless I missed something, it wasn't covered in depth.
You didn't miss anything. It wasn't discussed at that meeting, but there has been some discussions on it. They are having an RFP request for, or the answers, questions. The questions were due last week. And the RFP will be just due, I think in a week or two. And that project is now nearing 100 million from its original 67 million. And so again, when they say every political capital needs to be spent, it will need to be spent for that building and for the funding because in four years, the funding will be in the massive negatives. If there's no change, either operationally, right, proactively, they can change their budget by decreasing. And I'm still set that Scott and I and Matt are going to be meeting here soon next week, but that, you know, Clive should keep pushing for that on-demand piece where we can even get out of Dart and five. And all our folks can do an on-demand phone call like Uber, it will decrease the cost to Dart. So Clive is best situated for that on-demand. I think our residents would really thrive.
And we talked about that for years too.
And that's part of this change too. It won't affect Clive, but part of the reason why they're doing some of these route changes is because they're expanding that Dart on-demand transit zone for Jordan Creek Parkway, for Jordan Creek, you know, Western Point area. So.
Western Point and Ankeny have got it as a pilot and I'll say, because they were the squeakiest wheels. You know, saying we're pulling.
And you haven't been a squeaky wheel.
Been a very squeaky wheel, but we're sliced of that wheel and we need to be squeakier.
Now they're doing a pilot on the north side of Des Moines to the principals funding Dart on demand too.
Yep. That's for school kids.
Yeah. And there was, there was talk about that too. And there's, there's already some pretty good, you know, KPIs to share on that with, with the DMPS pilot. So hopefully that'll help expand that program faster too.
So it's rider sit-down for Des Moines like it is around the country. You know, they're saying that it's depressing revenues for all kinds of transit systems. Everybody's having to reimagine.
It, it, it did come back a little bit from like the really lowest pandemic levels, but it's not, it's not.
I mean, and it's not trending good, well.
Right.
So what, what's the plan with that?
So I mean, that, I think that's, that's why they're pushing for this diversification, right? So, so that they have another form of funding coming in so that they're not having to talk about, do we start cutting services to cut operational costs?
Before you kind of taking over, I, I asked the question numerous times as well, as I think you did in the meeting, is I'd like to see parallel budgets, right? With their diversified funding because it's a giant wish tree, right? And if you don't get it like you haven't for the last three years, what are you going to do? They're not even planning for that.
And that's the concern.
They're completely planning for the funding to come in.
Yep.
And then the rug's going to be pulled out and they're going to say, yeah, we're out, we're, we're negative 4 million in our operational budget. What are you all going to do for us? They're asking Des Moines to step up and pay that.
Yeah.
And saying no.
And well, and Des Moines is already setting the stage to say, well, look, we'll go this far, but after that.
So do you look at it on a per writer basis on what kind of investments happening? I just, I think it's harder.
I sound like I'm being, I sound like I'm being harsh, but they've been asking for that per writer number. And it has not been provided because I think it's an. And it has not been provided, because I think it's an astronomical number. And. It's, they've been unwilling to really share that or the alternative budget system. Does there have to be a Dart? Yes. Does there have to be public transit? Yes. Most on that board are saying it doesn't have to be accordion buses. It doesn't have to be, you know, the, the full bus. Can it be a fifteen-person van? Can it be? And we're slowly moving that way, but. In three years, they're going to be forced to, especially, I mean, you count on the legislators. You gotta be crazy, right? On anything. I don't care what side of the, you're on.
Yeah, that, that, one of the financial meetings, like you, you know, like you're saying, Michael, it was just kind of like, yeah, this is what we're going to do. And, and nothing about, okay, what happens if this piece doesn't fall into place, which is a big if. And so I, I think the presenter there, I think he said he was going to get some numbers, but I haven't seen anything. I don't know. I don't know if anybody else has seen it, so that's another, we'll just have to keep pushing. See if we get those.
Good luck. Anything else?
Welcome to Dart.
Yeah. If not, we'll move on to Ted.
Okay, so last Friday, attended the West Side Legislative Breakfast. I'll leave that to John and Susan, who are also there for that update. And then I'll move on to my more dramatic update. So today we had our special policy meeting for the MPO, it was about four hours long. Kind of a mini strategic planning session, if you will. The intent is to try to define the role and the mission of the MPO. There is very severe. Fractures and disagreements within the MPO and even at exec about what that means. Our good friend Pat Bodie facilitated, she did an amazing job. We were able to come to some very high-level decision tree questions. The, the rub is going to get into the process and the criteria. Once you get into those decisions, we didn't get anywhere close to that. So basically, a couple of really simple ones, is it transportation-related? And is it an MPO member? If the answer to that is yes, then we do it. That's part of the MPO's role. If it's a non-member and it's non-transportation-related and it comes to us, the answer is no. That's not our role. They're not members of our group and it's not transportation-related. Those are the easy ones, right? And then it's, okay, if it's not transportation-related, but it has a transportation component. And they are a member. Now what do we do? And the answer is, well, maybe we will, maybe we won't. Now, how do we define all that? There's no, not even close to agreement on that. If it's a non-member, not transportation-related, or it's transportation-related. They're a non-member, but it affects our region. Again, maybe we do. So again, how do we work through that? And then our, our good friend, former mayor from Carlisle, brought up kind of a catch-all of. Small communities have needs and some planning needs and some contractual management needs and things of that nature that they cannot get anywhere else. And it's a very fair point, right? That they don't have the staff, they don't have the capacity to, to, to do those types of roles. They are a member, they don't get a whole lot of projects from the MPO. They, but we have this planning staff that have these, these capabilities and they have the, they have the bandwidth. Should they not be able to provide those services? It's a fair question. We have certain members who are just as adamant as you can be that that should not happen ever under any circumstances. And then you have others who believe strongly that, you know, we're a regional entity, we need to be able to expand beyond that. We did revisit our twenty seventeen mission, our strategic plan, went over the mission and the vision statement. And it is. It is very focused on multimodal transportation. It's very clear, at least in my opinion, there were people who tried to. Interpret some language out of it that I, I didn't think was accurate, but. So the question is, is do we need to go back and update that mission statement and the vision? To, to support some of these other. You know, roles and functions that the MPO can and has been, in all honesty, performing over the last few years. So we didn't get anywhere close to consensus. We spent four hours and had a lot of. Lot of strong opinions on both sides. Another complication that you guys need to know about. If you recall, Gunner Olson came here and briefed the full council on a new entity that was proposed, that was called MIPA. The mid, mid Iowa Planning Alliance. The way it was presented, the way it was presented to MPO and the way it was presented to us was. Hey, we've got federal dollars from economic development standpoint that is just low-hanging fruit, that if we just have this entity. We could get those dollars and we're, we're leaving money on the table, basically. And so we just need a single staff person, they'll be housed at the MPO. You know, it'll be funded through the MPO. But it's just going to be kind of an army of one to kind of go get these dollars that we're, we're, we're missing out on. Well, that is blowing up and it's, 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 it's growing that, that role and, and. The vision of that entity is, is growing quite substantially. And it's causing real heartburn for, for certain, certain cities who are talking about, to the point of, we're pulling out. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty serious. So that whole relationship. With the MPO and the fiduciary aspects of all that. You know, there's just a lot of questions about the growth of the scope of this entity, all being housed under, under the umbrella of the MPO. And is that. Appropriate based off of our twenty-eighties? You know, do the twenty-eighties need to be amended to, to deal with that? Don't know. Apparently, we have some legal opinions that are on both sides. So which legal opinion do you accept?
The one you agree with.
And that's, that's kind of where they're at, right?
Council, I can say, because I, on behalf of the city, I was. Asked to go ahead and sit on those meetings and this kind of sounds like mission creep or more expansion of what the perceived budget. To my knowledge, has not been brought to us as a port.
Okay. Yeah, and that, that, that very well may be true. A lot of what was discussed today was, oh, well, this should be moved over to MIPA. This is something MPO is doing now. Well, that, that should fall under MIPA. Oh, you know, that's not what their mission was and that's, and, and we've also seen some things where they've asked for. Or, I, I don't know the specifics, I can't speak to it, but where, what I've heard is that they have asked for other things. That are go way beyond, again, what we were just originally told, as, hey, we're leaving dollars on the table, let's, let's just put this entity together and we can go get those dollars.
And that's to include more lease space, more personnel.
More staff and it's all permanent, right? So, yeah, so. It, it's causing a lot of consternation. So again, we, Pat did a really nice job in controlling it as best she could. We were able to come up with a very high-level kind of decision tree shell. But all the details that fall under that. Don't have a clue at this point, so a lot more to come on that.
I've heard it's lively down there.
It was, I mean, we broke out in an individual, you know, small groups and it was effective, but. But there was, you know, plenty of debate.
Thank you, Ted. We're glad you're there.
Mayor and I attended MAC this week. We received presentations from regarding homelessness and also digital equity. Ted?
What does that mean, digital equity?
It can mean a lot of things. He wasn't exactly sure either, but access to bandwidth. Ability and Mary Mike.
Email?
Well, access technology.
An individual now with that role. And so he's heading up a department to try to address those issues throughout the state.
Right.
Is that under MPO?
That's not in our mission.
I, I think it's Department of Interior. It's Department of Interior position that I've heard of and. I'm. Thought it was, it's a focused on urban or was it?
No, rural as well.
The main needs, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So there may be opportunities there.
So is, is there anything where they've been talking about the, some of the federal funding that might be able to be utilized for some of those things?
That was part of.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, they're looking at a lot of different. Opportunities.
Was this Chris Hall, former state senator, who was the presenter on this one?
I don't think it was Chris Hall.
Anything else?
Nope.
Well, I wanted to just mention that after the legislative meeting, I had a chance to meet with Rachel Wecker, who's the new. Dallas County Development Director. Came from the city of West Des Moines and prior to that had been with I D E A. And I'm really impressed with how she is trying to take her time to. Really figure out how they can really provide value. And she ended up inviting me to come to their strategic planning session that's coming up on the eighteenth. So I had wanted to connect with her, just, you know, so we knew each other to be able to talk about what the five Economic Vitality Committee is doing, et cetera. So anyway, I'm looking forward to that connection. It was real interesting for the January meeting of the Economic Vitality Committee to move it to Thursday night so we could. Join with planning and zoning and hearing the presentation by Chris Shires. And the university corridor plan. The one downside was. Well, there were two. We didn't have as good attendance as usual and. Because it was a P and Z meeting, I think that may have depressed conversation a little bit. Coming from the Economic Vitality Committee members, it was really the P and Z. I, I don't know if you'd agree with that, Pete. Speaking up for the most part. So I don't mean it to come across as a negative, but I just took note that we need to be kind of careful. You know, it'd be kind of nice to have them feel like they're on the same playing field, maybe instead of within.
To, to kind of add to that, it seemed like a couple of the members were still kind of vocal, but everyone else was kind of like, I'm just going to, it wasn't as equalized.
I don't think, which ones? I, I don't think any.
Commercial developer and then Amy Montgomery is the one that was sitting next to me, they both.
Well, they said one thing, a piece, but it wasn't really like our usual meetings.
It wasn't like everybody, like it normally is.
No. It really wasn't. So. And then Bravo's coming up. Oh, I don't know who else is planning to go, but.
I think we've got. Nine of the ten seats. Eric. Don. Yep. And I, we should be getting some information on that here soon as we get closer to. That on the details, but you should have a, I think you should be all on your calendars, those that are going. I think I sent a meeting right over there. Usually it's five or six start.
Even start beating us up for the money yet, though.
No, I haven't sent out the reminder on that yet. Again, as we usually do, you just pay for the ticket for your significant other in the city, pays for yours.
Before we move to Michael, the Iowa O C I O head is Jeff. B E R C K E S.
Burkes, Jeff Burkes. I know Jeff, good guy.
Yeah, he seemed like a good guy. So, Michael.
Does I have anything for you, Mayor?
Pointed. Aren't we all? Is. Legal counsel still on the line?
I am. I have nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I have, Your Honors, in two weeks, we'll have a partnership dinner. So I'll have a little bit of detail on my. Weekly update. Also have some detail for you. We've got a, a pretty good. Thing that's happened over the last week, we've potentially secured a very, very large sponsorship for Green Belt Landing. Very, that'll be the biggest that we've received to date. Lot more details to work out. We, and so I'll share some of that with you tomorrow, but. That will be something that'll come before you. In terms of an agreement, but it's focused on the playgrounds, sponsorship for all the playgrounds. So very exciting. Richard's been working really hard on that one for the last month, and I think we're. And maybe be able to bring that across the finish line here soon. So, and that would. Push, along with Pete's work and working with Congress, former Congresswoman Axdees's office, we also did secure a half a million dollars in the last federal budget appropriation. That she had put in there for her community project, so. That's, could be, it, it is enough to put us below the one million dollar mark of what's left to raise. And move that project forward to starting construction this year. So pretty exciting stuff that's happening with Green Belt Landing right now. Last thing I'll have is I'll just be out of the office tomorrow doing interviews for our next WestCom chief, because our. Former one is, left us a couple of weeks ago. So we'll be doing interviews over in West Des Moines for that tomorrow. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any correspondence, Matt? Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we'll adjourn at nine twenty-five.